All the, uh, the meeting here of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Rose?
Here.
Franklin?
Here.
Whitworth?
Here.
Geller?
Here.
Cumbier?
Here.
McNally?
Here.
Okay, and Stan? Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, has this meeting been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper floor levels of the Mission Community Center in Cambridge, Post Office, hometown bank, and the village website.
Okay. Lisa, immediately to your right, I see that we have a new, uh, individual here helping us out. Can you make the introduction?
Yep, um, Jane Landraddius, um, has been helping us from Stafford Rosebaum on some of the issues, a partner with Matt Rangie, who's been here before us, so she's here to help us out tonight.
Okay.
I can't hear you back here, sorry.
Also next to Jane is somebody.
Okay, I'll speak up.
Go ahead. Can you introduce Jane, please?
Jane Landraddius, an attorney with Stafford Rosebaum, who's been helping us on a number of issues, a colleague of Matt Rangie's, who has been helping us, so Matt is handing some of the, um, issues off to her, and she'll be helping us out.
Okay, alright. We cover the things we're supposed to and do this in the order. Okay, let's move on. Um, gonna open this up for public appearances.
Proof of posting.
We did that.
We did.
Yeah, okay, good, gotcha. Public appearances, uh, we like to give, uh, folks a couple minutes, two minutes, uh, if you would like to come up, if you've got something that you would, uh, like to talk about. And this is your, your comments, uh, there won't be any give and take, uh, we listen to you.
Can I just pull a home back? I live at three ten West Main Street, Cambridge, and I just wanted to, uh, let you all know that if, if there's a choice between, uh, stoplight or a roundabout, I would much prefer a roundabout. My house happens to be one of those houses, if there's a stoplight, that people will be idling in front of all day. So as a way to avoid that, I would prefer a roundabout. Um, I don't know when or how the, it was decided a stoplight would be good, but I don't recall there being a lot of public input on that, so I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Alright, is there anybody else?
Hey, everyone. Blake Solenberger, seven eleven Kinseth Way in the Village of Cambridge. Um, I wanted to check in on the status from last month. We had a, a vote to perform a stop work order on the developers and the vineyards due to the captive pond and the berms behind the homes on Kinseth Way, and I'm looking to get a status on that.
I'm happy to respond, if it's okay, President McNally. So we, that's not on the agenda for tonight, we're gonna, we're, we're discussing that with Dane County, actually, to see if we can actually identify some actual permit violations, and so we're gonna put that on a future agenda once it's ready, but we wanna have a, kind of a professional job on that before we do put it on the agenda.
Couple of things for you to look at, um, because there are multiple phases of the construction, which according to our ordinances, they need to provide an erosion control plan. They needed to do that at the beginning of all this, the Vineyards LLC. This is under, I don't know all the subs, but under this, what, chapter sixteen of the ordinances. So I'm certain the berms, the captive pond, are not adhering to any erosion control plan or the master plat, so definitely make sure to look into those two specifically. Berms on the Kinseth Way, um, their erosion is, or it's, uh, rainwater spillover into the walking path along the back of Kinseth Way, as well as the captive pond over by the dancing goat. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you hear back there?
No, we cannot hear back here. I have the mic turned on.
Oh, yeah, I don't think it's on.
That one isn't on. Chrissy, and I just put stands there, we can put another one on that.
Yeah, I'll have one back here.
That one's working. I'm gonna move this one.
Chrissy's gonna get another one.
What is it? Eggs. That's what we're doing. You stop it. Wait, we have a minute between police and that, it sounds like. Make eggs. Sorry, I have pahitas. I have pahitas, I'm sorry. Hopefully we'll get a break. Can I give you a minute?
Hi, I'm Andrea Masati, I live at seven oh five Vineyard Crossing in the, in, uh, Vineyards.
Andrea, can you just hold for one moment?
Oh, absolutely.
We wanna make sure that everybody is miked and you can hear in the back.
But for the public.
You wanna sign that? In case I decide to actually turn it on.
Of course.
I started.
Okay, Christine, Charles?
Got the other one here. Mine's sitting on my, uh, car table home.
Somebody's running to collect your office.
Sorry, that's okay.
Hi, mom. I don't know if I'm gonna turn it in or not, but I'm up.
Sure, yeah, why not?
Alright, um, can you just try the microphone?
Hello?
Can you hear back there?
Say something again, I'm sorry. Hello? Yep. Okay. Um, my name is Andrea Masati, I live at seven oh five Vineyard Crossing in the, in the Vineyards. Um, there has been a lot of talk about Vulcan. I, myself, do not own a Vulcan home, I have a custom-built home, so I'll leave part of that to my neighbors that do, but the issues that we have with Vulcan, um, one is the drainage issues. I have a Vulcan house being built on one side of me, and that lot now is about a foot and a half higher than it was three months ago before they started building, which will drain right into our, um, our yard and into our basement. Vulcan has not responded to my, um, inquiry as to what they're gonna do about it. Vulcan continually leaves their trash everywhere. Um, after the wind tomorrow, it may be throughout the entire neighborhood. Their construction materials are blocking sidewalks. Um, the police have been called numerous times on them, most recently last week because of the music. They, I understand construction noise, believe me, I, I don't have a problem with that, but when their construction crews have their music so loud that I can hear it inside my house as though it was in my living room, the police were called last week. I have personally, because I've had houses being built by Vulcan across the street from me and now next to me, and I've personally asked them very politely to turn it down or lower it so that I, 'cause I work from home, too. Um, they don't respond. Vulcan doesn't respond to any of our requests for help or guidance or anything that we would like done. All of the sidewalks and the homes that they're built are broken from their trucks sitting on them. Um, we, like I said, personally, we don't have a Vulcan house, but the drainage issue that we are gonna have, we also have a custom home being built on the other side of us, and I spoke to that neighbor today, there is a Vulcan home being built on the, uh, on the other side of him. That, that house has got to be at least four to five feet higher than the rest of our houses are right now, and I know that when we moved in, we were the only house on the block, and so that whole side of that street was for the most part level, 'cause my husband used to mow a lot of it, and, um, now it's not, and so they haven't responded to me asking how they're going to fix the drainage issues. I know in the past through my neighbors that they don't care, and they just do what they basically do what they want. Um, there is a grading plan that was submitted when the subdivision was submitted, um, so...
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Did you have a question?
I can ask any questions.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we're giving everybody two minutes.
That would like to speak.
Good evening, I'm David Masati, Andrea's husband, at seven oh five Vineyard Crossing. Um, I did wanna just bring up the, the, the main topic as far as I'm concerned. When we moved in, we received a topographical survey map, and we're instructed that no changes to the grading should be done, or it would be out of compliance, uh, so our builder did not. Uh, it's very obvious to me that the grading has changed, and my question to the board is, how do we get a new survey? You know, who is going to pay for, um, a survey of that property to verify that, um, when we start experiencing these draining, drainage issues, where do we go from there? We already have an original plot, topographical, all the elevations, um, and it's, it's not that way to the naked eye, and what's, where's the cost gonna be absorbed if and when we get to the point of needing a survey? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Others?
We're on the agenda, right? Okay. Anybody?
Hello, everybody, I'll keep it brief today. Um, thank you for our conversation earlier, uh, just to keep everything fully above board and transparent, I'd like to reiterate to the board, I do appreciate you guys, uh, taking action to correct my complaints from my last public comment where I was dissatisfied with the record-keeping of the meeting at hand, um, and I do appreciate the, uh, notes being updated and change in the village website. However, uh, I do have concerns that, uh, it does not appear that the village board met to approve those minutes and that agenda, um, and I'm not sure if that is something that actually needs to happen or not, but, uh, if I did miss a special, uh, quorum of the board, um, that would be unfortunate because I do look for those, and so, uh, just wanted to, to kinda, you know, say thank you for addressing my concerns, but also just kinda wanted to express some concern that possibly it didn't actually happen per the regulations of your own bylaws. Um, of course, I might be mistaken, um, but I also might not be, so, thanks for your time, uh, I'd like to take a moment to thank you all for volunteering to be here, um, and then, uh, as well, I'd like to encourage all of you to, uh, dig deep within yourselves to try to help the members of your community who are suffering from, uh, drainage issues in the Vineyards. Thank you for your time.
Alright, uh, anybody else?
I, go on.
Okay.
I wanna keep the continuity going with that.
I think they're on the agenda.
Okay. You're welcome. Uh, Dean Lund, three nineteen South Pleasant Street, um, here to talk about, uh, the solar project that is happening. Within the next thirty days, the Public Service Commission will be meeting to decide the fate for the next fifty years of our village. Uh, what I put on here is just a little bit of documentation, uh, number one, the agenda that the PSC has, showing within the next month here, we will be up in front of the Public Service Commission. Uh, behind that, uh, I believe I have the notices for the public meeting and the, the thing, and then on the next section, I kinda got a, for you of that have not gone up there and looked at the PSC and all the documents on there, a little tutorial to get in there, I know some of you religiously look at it, and I do wanna thank the village employees and Wyatt, especially for all the work you went in there, I kinda highlighted some documents to go look at, which is our testimony that we submitted, our advisor, and I know it's not on the agenda, and I know we got here the end of December, Christmas season coming up, and we might not, I was kinda hoping we can get a meeting in for rebuttals, sir rebuttals, of what we may have to present to the PSC, because in the next thirty days, it will be decided. Um, the applicant, that last packet I got in there, that applicant, Rita, they came after us with forty-three different requests, and we spent the last two months, a lot of time, a lot of energy, and once again, thank you for our employees and thank you Wyatt, we had to do a lot of work. You've done a lot of work here in the last six months, let's not drop it, because I haven't heard anything in the last month, so that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Dean, I want to add one thing, uh, our rebuttals are due on the seventeenth of December.
Friday. If we need to rebuttal.
Okay.
So, just wanna let you know, let's not drop the ball, um, and then, yes, Merry Christmas, and Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anybody else that would care to, uh, make a, a comment here? Okay, we're gonna close the, uh, the public appearances, uh, let's move on here with the agenda. Approval of the consent agenda. Board minutes of, uh, November twenty-third, economic development, November thirtieth, and public works, December seventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, do we have any questions? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Uh, president's report, um, I'd like to, um, just talk briefly here at this time about, um, oh, two weeks ago, we had our Cambridge Christmas, and, uh, we had a, uh, just a wonderful night, I don't know how many of you trustees had a chance to come down, um, I estimate, I, I started counting, but I kept getting interrupted, but there were about two to three hundred people, wow.
You can only count to ten.
Uh, yeah, I can only count to ten, okay. Uh, but I, I was counting them, and they were, it were, they were at least two hundred, uh, but I estimate that there were three hundred, at least, um, that's what my wife was as well. We had the tree lighting, uh, Santa Claus, uh, came down with Mrs. Claus, uh, Santa was from, uh...
Fort Atkinson.
The North Pole. North Pole, Mark. He was visiting.
Yeah, he, he was, he was, I'm sorry. He, he was from the North Pole, uh, but he had a, he came in with the fire truck and they, they dropped him off, and, uh, he was there with Mrs. Claus, uh, charming couple, and, uh, there was caroling and there were, the shops were open, uh, there were candles in these bags that were all the way along the streets, um, some of the, the shopkeepers had, uh, photography services, uh, Dean, I know you did, um, there were product specials, businesses were open, and sales were strong, uh, it was probably the second, uh, most, um, consequential day in the year, there, there's another one, but this one here was really good. So between Saturday and Sunday, um, we had a, a really good turnout for this, and, uh, I, um, I, I think that, you know, you couldn't ask for Cambridge to, uh, to put on a, on a better show, uh, that, than what they did, so, thank you very much to the Lions Club for, um, for, for getting this together, and, um, if you, you didn't have a chance to go to it, you, you can go to it next year, and, uh, Mrs. Claus may be there, but Santa will, and will continue on. So that's my report, and it's kinda homespun and corny tonight, but, um, it was a big evening. Okay, moving on, uh, library board.
Uh, we met last Wednesday, um, there's a Friends of the Library, um, meeting, and February will be the Chocolate Event with a membership drive, um, the Friends of the Library President, Sharon Urb, will be retiring from the present role at that time, I'm not sure who's gonna take her place, um, and I would say most of the time that we spent, two and a half hours, was spent on reviewing the budget and looking at that, which we'll be talking about later.
Okay, alright, any questions for Chris, library? Okay, uh, joint law enforcement, Ted?
Well, we just...
Or Wyatt, I'm sorry.
Well, we're both there. Um, I am the cheer of it, but, uh, but Ted was there too. Um, so, like Ted said, we just met tonight, we just met, uh, earlier today, um, biggest things, I mean, updates from the, the police, um, a couple of things I took note of, one, the, they're, they're concerned about the auto theft that's been increasing in Madison and Cottage Grove, seeing potentially some of that moving east, um, so just a reminder, I think we're gonna try to look to put something maybe in the paper on our website, just to remind people to lock their doors, not be complacent, uh, car doors outside, um, so that's the biggest concern. They also are part of a Traffic Safety Concerns Commission, um, sort of at the county level, they're looking at all big traffic concerns, um, it seems like the concerns from our citizens were covering about eighty percent of it by things we're already addressing, so the, um, updates to one thirty-four and twelve and eighteen, um, the, there's potentially updates in Deerfield to Oak Park Road and W and twelve and eighteen there, um, some other things with like traffic lights and other stuff, uh, so that was a big thing. Um, and then they're gonna be back to their full team in February as we sort of have outages and other things sort of settle, and some of our new staff. Um, the other big thing, which, Chrissy, I don't know, it's not on the agenda, but this, the new Schedule A updates, um, do we need to add that in in some way, or how do we, how do we address that? So, I can say to the rest of you guys, essentially, there, the union contract got finalized after our budget, and so there is an increase of about eight thousand dollars, it'll be split between the two villages.
And the school district.
And the school district, it's still less than what twenty twenty-one was, so we're still seventeen thousand dollars less, but we're obviously more than what we approved our budget for, um, the police recognized that, but it was just sort of the union contract was still outstanding.
And for our budget purposes, we always approve the Schedule A in full, and each year when they're on special teams, SWAT, motorcycles, special events, we are not charged when they are on those events, so if our portion goes up, two to three thousand dollars, will be fine in our budget because we're not charged on those days that the officers aren't here.
Okay.
So that's kind of a built-in...
Buffer.
...safeguard for us.
And our employees, too.
Yeah, the new, and the reason the cost is less is the two new, um, deputies that we will have are at lower pay grades than the two that are leaving, so that has brought the contract down. I wanna say it's seventeen thousand less...
Yeah.
...still than it was, so it's still in a very good position.
Yep, agreed. I don't think there was much else, right, Ted?
He didn't miss anything.
Yeah. Oh, you're fine.
There, um, they mentioned something about garage doors and knocking on.
Oh, yeah, just essentially, um, Mike, when he was on staff, would, when people left their garage doors open, would come and just ring people's doors in the middle of the night, even if it was two AM, and so the new, one of the new deputies will probably do a similar thing, just to remind people, 'cause I mean, the auto theft, the problem is, not only are they stealing cars that are unlocked, but they'll go in through people's garages, take your keys off of your counter, and steal your car, um, so just a reminder, they'll, they will help you close your garage door, even if it's in the middle of the night, just to help remind people to not be complacent, so.
So if you leave it open, two thirty, you might get a call from law enforcement...
Yeah.
...waking you up. Okay, alright, any questions? For Wyatt, okay?
Close your garage doors.
Okay, uh, let's move on to, uh, village office updates, Lisa?
Um, first and foremost, property tax bills, we have received them from both counties, so Chrissy worked hard getting all the information to both counties, we've received the bills, they will be going out, um, this week, we're in the process of stuffing them, so those will be in the mail this week, number, as you know, of ongoing issues, um, we've been working on, um, open records requests, stormwater, as, um, Jane mentioned, we're working with Dane County, gathering information, we plan to have a full report on that and some of the construction issues in January, um, Jason from Dane County has said he'd come down and, um, meet with the board as well, so we've been working with them, um, uh, Highway one thirty-four, as you see, and we'll get its correspondence, a response from the state, um, I'm working with Ellers, so that at our next meeting, we can discuss the referendum questions, so they're getting together some financials and information for us on that, so we can work on that.
Okay, any questions for Lisa? Okay, let's move on, uh, bills, Chrissy?
First round of bills was thirty-five thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Second round that went out today is two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, grand total of three hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, if you'd like here to make the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in this amount.
Hold a second, and then I have a question.
Yep.
There was one for an excavation, excavator or something like that for a high amount, I believe?
Um, in today's round?
Yeah.
That was for the bike trail, so, uh, county, country did approve the...
Yep.
...the payment for the bike trail.
Yeah, I just couldn't figure out where, what it was for, but now I do. That's fine.
That was the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
I had the same question. Okay, um, others? Um, I had two other questions, one was with Wapon Equipment, Chrissy, you gave me the invoice, it was twelve hundred and thirty-one dollars, um, this, um, Chris, you don't have anything on this, right? Just standard repair order for this?
Give me more detail.
Um, this was on the, uh...
What is the bill amount?
Look on the invoice.
Uh, the bill amount was one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Yeah, that, I believe that was with our tractor, we had a, a sensor that wasn't working for the mower that we use to mow hitches with, so we had to get it taken care of.
Okay, and some other work here.
And maintenance.
Alright, and then, um, last one here, uh, Invenergy Solar, Murphy Desmond, fifteen thousand, five forty-nine, that's still below our cap here that we had, um, I forget how much we had appropriated for that.
Yeah, I think it's still under, uh, it's getting close, though, so I think last I looked, I was at, we're just under forty, so we're probably just under sixty now, so...
Okay, alright. Uh, those are my questions, uh, anything else? Okay, we've got a motion and a second, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin?
Yeah.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Geller?
Yeah.
Cumbier?
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes, okay. All right, moving on, unfinished business, um, we're gonna receive some input from Tim Phelps and Brenda Newman regarding the concerns as they relate to their home-building process, so if you wanna come up, introduce yourselves, uh, Tim and Brenda, and, um...
I'm Brenda Newman.
Tim Phelps.
Seven one six Kinseth Way, um, did, did you check, Mark, Lisa, get an email from you today?
I did, right before I had to leave.
With photos?
Yes.
Yes, I looked at those.
Okay. So, um, it was, it was suggested to us to simplify and send you guys some photos to put what we're saying to the pictures.
That's sent out to the board, or just...
I didn't know who all to send it out to.
No, that's fine, I just wanted, did I miss that?
Um, you, you did, because I didn't know who to send it to, but if anybody wants me to send all this stuff to them, please give me your email, and I'd be more than happy to send a barrage of stuff to you. Um, we've got inspection reports that have been sent out, we have photos that have been sent out, we have a structural engineer that's been sent out, inspector, um, reports from, um, pictures that we've taken, pictures of anything that we've been asked to do, we have sent out, but I didn't know who all to send them to, so...
I just pointed away from it, I didn't miss it.
Nope, nope, we can get your, we can get your stuff and we can send it out to you.
Okay.
Um, so in accordance to the photos we sent, um, we basically sent those photos to back what we were saying about your hired, uh, safety inspector, or building inspector, I'm sorry, so, this being the first that led us to, which was picture number three, I believe, which was the insulation stuck in our PVC at the corner, at the double forty-five, which we had no hot water for the first four days, because he did not run the hot water, test the hot water, that was issue number one, um, then...
But he passed it.
He passed it. All these things that we're bringing up, he rubber-stamped everything, so the second thing we had was our sewer backed up in our basement, two weeks after we moved in, because he never pulled the test plug.
Did he flush the toilet?
We have... I'm sorry?
Did he flush the toilet?
Obviously not, never ran the showers either, because when we did our walkthrough, he, he CO'd us, but we... had no hot water for the first four days, because he did not run the hot water, test the hot water. That was issue number one.
But he passed it.
He passed it. All these things that we're bringing up, he rubber stamped everything. So, the second thing we had was our sewer backed up in our basement, two weeks after we moved in, because he never pulled the test plug. We have.
Did he flush the toilet?
I'm sorry?
Did he flush the toilet?
Obviously not. Never ran the showers either, because when we did our walkthrough, he CO'd us. But we ran the water in our shower, we pulled the plug up, and, which was the water we showed you down the pipes, our water ran down into the basement in two, in the two bathrooms, because when you pulled up the drain, the shower spigot, it literally spewed everywhere.
It shot out the back end.
And then ran down to our basement in two, in both bathrooms. So, we had to call a plumber in to fix that. And that was the day that we moved in. Because we did our walkthrough, we signed our paperwork, came back, and nobody used the bathroom. So, that happened, that's, that as well. Then we had the, which, let me just pass these out. I only made four copies. I just put one on each table, I think, or one to share them. Other things that were brought up that were, again, rubber stamped was, the first one on that page was, our downspout is literally sitting on our porch. It's not drained right, it's not properly plumbed, there's no downspout, no drainage to go into our yard, it's sitting on the corner of our porch.
And it went into our basement.
It went into our basement, because it was not graded to sit on our porch. It's supposed to be going down the hill. The second one that's on there is, sorry. The second one on there, if you see the two pipes, they're not, they're turned the wrong way. Those are exhaust valves coming in from our basement, from our water heater and our furnace. They're an inch and a half above the ground. That's not code. So, if snow were to fill in, we'd be fixated in our own home.
Or it's not gonna work.
Or it's not gonna work.
Right.
So, ignore the third one, that's just a broken sink that Vulcan has to fix. The other things that were brought up with us were, one, the hot water heater was never tested, the sewage backup, we had to have our whole basement cleaned out because the sewage was up our wall, because of the test plug. We actually have the test plug, we're waiting for this to go to court. Our, the air vents, the downspouts, the, what else is there?
Well, it was basically plumbing issues that sent us to this point, to why, why everything was rubber stamped and a CO was issued. You know, this stuff should all been caught by the building inspector, had he been there and physically done it, which he says he did.
Properly done.
But, I don't know. You have these issues the day you move in.
And the downspout that you also saw in those pictures, four other houses on our street are the same situation. Two houses have fixed their own because Vulcan has done nothing. Another thing is the, again, we were suggested to make a list of all the other, some other things that were done in our neighborhood. One house had no shut-off valves in their kitchen, and they had a water issue, they couldn't shut off their water, so their water flooded on their brand-new floor. There's no insulation in all the houses that were in the cul-de-sac, have no insulation in the living quarters. And Scott never inspected because they're sealed shut and painted shut, so he never crawled into the attic to inspect.
Outside walls or?
Ceiling.
No, the ceiling. The attic into, in the living quarters have never been insulated, but he never inspected that.
Well, that's nice.
Their inspectors noticed that, after they got the CO. He CO'd all these, and then the inspector came in before their final closing. All this stuff is prior, prior to the closing of all of our houses, but COs were issued.
But the home inspector caught this?
Caught this, yes.
You paid for the home inspector and?
We all paid for our own home inspectors.
That's right.
Yeah.
But you paid for those in September of this year.
We didn't get a home inspection, because a new bill, we didn't think we needed a home inspection.
Well, that's what you needed.
But, obviously.
Hindsight.
Hindsight now, but that's why we've told everyone in the neighborhood to go get inspection. And they have found so many issues with.
If Chuck built my house, I would have no issue.
With Scott. Anyway, so getting on, so, there's.
So, you, I'm sorry, is it, I don't mean to.
No, go ahead.
No, ask your question.
So, when you got an occupancy, you got occupancy that came from our inspection.
From Scott Jolly.
And that's when you moved in, is when you got the order of occupancy?
Well, it was already issued, then we did our walkthrough.
Do you know when it was issued? Do you have?
It was either the seventh or the eighth of June, like the CO.
No, no, because we closed on the seventh.
We closed on the eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry, the eighth.
I'm sorry, the seventh of what month?
Seventh of June.
Okay, so you closed on the seventh of June.
We closed on the eighth.
Okay.
And then we did our walkthrough on the eighth, just before our closing.
Okay.
And these things were already in air. But he issued.
But you didn't see anything on the eighth?
We, we had a.
When you did the walkthrough?
Well, we did our walkthrough, and we didn't have a lot of time, we had a half hour. They gave us an hour, we had thirty minutes to drive to Evansville to sign our closing.
Right.
So, we had thirty minutes.
Okay.
And they pushed us through it. But there were a lot of things, we had sixty-eight items on our walkthrough list.
Oh, you did have a list?
Oh, yeah. We're up to a hundred and, like, eighty-two or, yeah. So, yeah.
So, when you had that list from the walkthrough, then you go to the closing, did you present that list of issues?
Yeah. Oh, and they said, oh, yeah, we'll get on it and we'll fix it. We haven't, we have not heard a thing from Vulcan.
Do you have any documentation of that?
Absolutely, yeah.
We'll fix it?
Well, yeah, well, they said they'll fix it. Now it's cosmetic. Now they're saying everything's cosmetic.
Even though.
So, even though it's not cosmetic.
It's cosmetic when you gotta put insulation in the living quarters.
Exactly. Or we have to have a plumber come out and fix the plumbing, or we have to have somebody come in, clean up the sewer that's backing up on our basement, or we have no hot water.
So, President McNally, is it okay if I offer some advice to the members of the board here on this and some options that we might have going forward? So, what I see as the option for the board, if they'd like to hear more details about the claims of Mr. Phelps and Ms. Newman, there's a notice of claim process if you feel like you've been wronged from, by the village, or some failure of the village to take the proper procedures here. And that process is in the statutes in 893, specifically 893.80. That's the remedy that folks like this have when they're, when they feel like they've been aggrieved. So, their next step would be to file that notice of claim, it would contain these itemized lists, and then we, as the village, could review that and look at the merits. But it seems like that's the first step in the process of taking a formal response to this.
Well, just a few more things that you are not aware of, because you haven't, I think you were at a table the other day, or one other meeting that we were here. Two houses were, if you see their CO and the furnace, in one house, the furnace was not hooked up, nor the hot water heater, and then in another house, the furnace was not hooked up, nor were the water lines. And the CO was already written. And they were supposed to move in the next day.
That's wrong.
And the inspector was there to inspect, and he had to refuse inspection.
So, again, I think that's the kind of process, this is, this falls into the notice of claim process that we can use to evaluate these kinds of, these kinds of issues.
But it should also evaluate your inspector, too, because if he's writing off COs like this, and we're having, not only us, but other houses are getting COs with these major issues that are serious code violations, and you can't move into a house without hot, without heat and water and stuff like that, this is being stamped. Why?
And unfortunately, some of these people would have moved in, these kids are young, these are their first homes. They're moving in, and they don't know another difference.
Young kids.
If they would not have had an inspector in there, they would be sitting in the same situation we're sitting in.
So, I think it's either a notice of claim issue or a disciplinary issue if the board proceeds.
This way, I would like them fired.
We need to be compensated, this is, this is ridiculous.
Absolutely.
We have done nothing but for months have been dealing with him.
And it is the notice of claim procedure that, that the residents could use to be compensated, but there's the process that we've gotta follow for that.
We're already in legal, legal notice now, so.
We have it right there, so.
So, but, okay, just a few of things, the other houses are dealing with, again, nobody's got insulation above their houses, and then fans, drywall's not done on the walls that should be drywalled. And again, Scott should have caught all these things. I'm not sure, I'm not sure who's responsible for Scott. So, who is that?
Is that you, being the administrator of the village? I'm asking a question, Lisa.
See, this isn't the appropriate time to have the back-and-forth questions, that's why we need to file, I really, I wouldn't advise the board to answer questions like this, especially if there's a prospective lawsuit, which that's, I mean, the notice of claim procedure is how these questions can become presented to the board.
So, all, so all the neighbors should file this notice?
And that is the procedure, if you feel like you've been aggrieved. It's, I would not advise the board members to just answer questions in this manner.
And that's fine, that's fine. But our concern is, is Vulcan is continuing to build.
And your inspector is continuing to rubber stamp.
To rubber stamp everything. And nobody is stopping him from building. And there's, there's five more houses to go up. And like we brought up last night, there's, there's one house that has broken trusses. I guarantee you, those trusses are gonna be put up, because they don't care.
That's lot forty-four.
I mean, somebody's gotta stop this, somebody has to, he's gotta take his job serious, period. So, I don't know how that happens, but hopefully, nobody has to go through as much as we have gone through. I mean, we're talking, we're talking forty thousand dollars, and after you just build a brand-new house. Easy. And, and, and you guys, you guys have, you guys have been out to see, we have issues in the house, we finally put up, at the recommendation, to put up steel beams, because our house is Boeing.
Steel support.
Steel support, yeah, beams.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, steel support post, because our beams are Boeing almost two inches.
Because of the quality of the.
The workmanship.
The workmanship and lumber. It is what it is, but anyway.
I mean, we thank you, but somebody, you know, again, it's frustrating to us, it's frustrating to all these other homeowners that are coming in, and these young kids who are just beside themselves, because they have no clue what to do. And they don't have the money to do it. Not that we have the money, but we're, our house is a lot worse than a lot of the others.
Okay.
So.
All right. Do you know what you need to do?
Yep, we got that note, that notice.
Okay.
So, is this another legal expense that we have to deal with, too?
Let me.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you whether you wanna get an attorney, or, you know, or you could do it on your own.
It sounds like you've got all the information in place.
Okay.
So, fill out the notice of claim and submit.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. I am sorry you're going through this.
Thank you.
I, I am. Have a good night, everybody, and Merry Christmas. Yes. Okay. And we'll just move on to the next item here. I'm sure we'll be circling back on this one.
I hope so.
Yes. Can we do that and put that on up?
I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? Does anybody on the board want all this paperwork?
I would.
I'll just get one.
Can you send it to Lisa?
Yeah.
Well, we've already sent it to Lisa, nobody else.
I have not received all of it, and I haven't been asked to share it with all the board members, but send me information, and I'll forward it to all the board members.
We sent you the building inspector report, and it never got to anybody. We asked you to share that. And I've actually sent it personally to them, because they said that you never sent it to them.
Okay, well, if you could just resubmit everything.
Okay.
Everything that you have.
To everybody?
No, but we have to kinda go through.
To Lisa, so that we avoid having an open meeting with the, with the records coming in. That's a good practice.
Okay. Then I'll send it in the next couple of days, so you know that I'll expect it in the next couple of days.
All right.
So, it actually gets to you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on. Highway 134 Road Project, presentation from MSA, Joe DeYoung. What have you got?
All right, I had the request of the last medium, is it, I need to come back to this one to give a presentation to everyone, to give an update of where we're at with the 134 project. So, when this turns on, it should pop up. So, basically, this is an update from what it was before, you guys have heard it, I'm starting to block some views, when I'm trying to be able to do this, so everybody can see it all together. So, obviously, a couple of things we're gonna go over tonight is kinda the history of the project, we're gonna talk about the time of progress of the intersection, and then obviously, what the schedule's gonna be. So, a couple of little things have changed, and we're obviously going from there, but at the end of the day, it's important to go back and talk about where we came from and how we got to where we are today. So, basically, a couple of things we're gonna talk about, there's been some coordination with Wisconsin DOT, because it is State Trump Highway 134. We've also had a deal and worked with the Town of Christiana, we put a CSM together, and we also set up a TIF. So, to go through those things and go over it, one of the first things that happened kinda when I got involved is that we started talking about the sale of the land, obviously, to the Dancing Goat Distillery, where they have their rick houses, and we created a CSM that we'll show a little bit later. But at the end of the day, what basically came down to is that there was some discussion about the realignment of Lagoon Road. So, within that, I contacted the DOT, and these are documents that were provided to me, actually, from the Wisconsin DOT. And so, I'm sharing with it, because there's been a lot of discussion pre-MSA, but there's been a lot of discussion about realigning this for different reasons, and we're kinda gonna go over that to speak of. This is old, so obviously, some of the things that's changed since, like, 2016 or 17, when they got this, as you can see, Ken's Way at one point was gonna come through and connect. Everybody's fully aware that it's a cul-de-sac, it doesn't connect anymore, but you can see the two different connections, plus the Lagoon Road realignment. Those are things that we utilized at that time, when we got this, in order to determine what to do with the CSM. This is another sheet that came from the DOT, this one was very interesting to me, at least from an engineering aspect, because there was quite a bit of design put into this at that time. What's interesting is you see Ken's Way down here, this one obviously is the one that matters, which is Lagoon, and there's the elevations that they had, they were not going to do anything to 134, they were just gonna saw cut it, match in, and then put in like a type C or type D intersection, is what I refer to it. So, when I look at this, you can see there are some stormwater improvements, there were some grading, the road lined up with Vineyard Way, and you can see there was curving gutter that was somewhat being proposed to stop up there, and then sidewalk that was coming out. So, there's things I see that I have questions about, but at the end of the day, this is what was on record with the DOT. So, this is kinda where we started from. With that, obviously, we started looking at what happens in order for us to remove or kinda move around with Lagoon Road. What did we have to do? We found a concern or something that we wanted to deal with, with the township and the Town of Christiana, because it's a, right away is measured by rods, so a rod is usually So a rod is usually a four-road, which happens to be sixty-six feet in total, sixteen and a half feet per rod. Three rods, forty-nine and a half feet, was under the ownership and management of the village of Cambridge.
Christina. Christina.
No.
Cambridge, I said Gabriel.
Cambridge.
He works for Gabriel, so.
Cambridge, so you were in charge of three rods of the road and one rod, sixteen and a half feet was under the town of Christiana. The concern is, and when you go ahead and start looking at it, is that we start to see the realignment. I know this is really tough to see, but this is actually the CSM. Is that the road was going to cross and go over the town of Christiana. So we worked out a deal with them to basically take over full ownership of the road. Now, this is important for down the road because at some point, the road is going to be realigned and having it under one ownership to be able to do it, obviously, is something that you need to have control of in order to be able to realign it when it was time to do it. So right here is actually the CSM. And what I want to point out is that you put a lot of effort into it to get to this point. Is that when you sold the property, which again, this is parcel here, which is a major part of it, you kept back Lagoon Road. We're going to have to do it at some point, so we created a CSM that showed it. And there's this little, I don't know, teardrop or little redundant piece that's going to be on the south side of future Lagoon Road. That was sold as part of the deal over to the Dancing Goat. So at the end of the day, you own the existing road. Obviously, you owned in the proposed road, whenever it's built, or at least the right-of-way. And then everything else was sold. The other thing that came up quite a bit in our discussion at the beginning is how are we going to pay for it? You guys remember this, some of you were part of this, but setting up a TIF district was a big deal. This was our way that you at least have some money available to you to be able to do a project like the realignment of Lagoon Road. It's the number-one project in the TIF. We have the well, we have other things as well, but when it comes down to it, this is the number-one project that we have. So we took the area that you see here, put it in a TIF. And we don't know exactly how the TIF is going to do yet. We know there's been some improvements, particularly the Dancing Goat, the rig houses and improvements there. But we won't know for sure how the TIF is going to perform until next year. So although it's built, but taxes are based on the year previously at January first. So this year, obviously, the buildings are complete, but that won't be determined until what, Frazers come in and decide the final evaluation sometime this fall. So at the end of the day, you guys have put in a lot of effort and a lot of intention, fully understanding that at some point, we got to build Lagoon Road and tie it into Vineyard Way. And there's so much documentation on it, there's no way to get around it, that at some point, you are setting yourselves up in order to do this. That's just a matter of time and when. So with that said, that's kind of the history behind it. Kind of goes into what was thought about before and how we got to the point we are today. And now we're looking at what have we been doing since then? So since we had the point where we had the platting, we had that kind of determining, we start going into what was next. And you start seeing the things that were going on, DOT coordination. Your existing TIA's are things that have been done in your area so we can look at it. TIA is a traffic impact analysis. It's not that we had to do one necessarily for here that we know of yet. But at the end of the day, there's things that have been done in the area that we've been able to grab and use in order to find out what we think is going to happen here. Obviously, traffic counts and previous submittals, and I'll go over that one too. But you can see the topographic survey, the FDM manual requirements and the concept plan review. Those are all things that kind of been going on. The one I want to focus on right now, at least to make you sure you're aware of, is the FDM manual, Federal Design Manual from the state of Wisconsin. When it comes to this intersection being designed, it's not really what your wishes are, it's not really what my wishes are or anybody else. It really comes down to the design manual that's set up by the Wisconsin DOT and what the requirements are for this intersection. So when we look at, will it be a safe intersection? Will we do it to a safe? We're going to submit plans and requests to work within the DOT right-of-way. They're going to review it and see if it meets their standards. And there's things in there that obviously are forcing us to do more than what was planned. When I show you the plans from before, and that's probably why I was hesitant or stopped, is because of site distance. Those site distances are obviously determined by studies and stuff in this manual where basically, we have to take the height of a vehicle, take a look at it and see how far we can see. And that's what the FDM, their Federal Design Manual, tells us. So we'll get there, but at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that really how I want to do it or how I think is a safe intersection is almost meaningless. We have this guideline right in front of us that basically sells us what's a minimum, what's recommended, what's a maximum. All these things are kind of laid out to us based on a sixty-mile-an-hour design speed. So with that, I just want to point that out because where we're at right now, and this is just some data, I know it's going to be hard to read. But this is, actually, we do this throughout the state of Wisconsin, but this is the traffic council at the DOT on every, like a three-year rotation period. They do it every year, but they rotate through the state. And if you ever see those black tubes that go across the road, those are traffic counts. So they have this on their website and they show you what the traffic counts are for your community. I know it's kind of, kind of weird, but to look at it, I hope that this works. No. Up here, here's the community where it comes in. So you can see right here is where one thirty-four, that's Highway twelve. Here at about ninety-three hundred vehicles per day, ADT, that's how many vehicles come through it. There is no other count on one thirty-four until you get up here to this, what's called a little hamlet over here on the county line. And it's up to a thousand. That's the only count we have on one thirty-four. And although we don't know exactly what the count is right here, where the intersection is going to be, where the improvements are going to be done, we know it's somewhere between nine thousand and one thousand. To be honest, it's going to be a lot closer to a thousand, even if it reaches it because the number-one traffic producer you have here is, you know, is twelve. So this is something on a side road, it obviously gives you some idea. But that's kind of a big deal because that tells us what type of intersection we have to design. What I want to point out here is this is just down the road. And again, I want to introduce it, Woodhaven Court. This is a T-intersection that comes into one thirty-four. And you can see by the improvements of it and stuff, and I took another picture. They put in an acceleration and deceleration, which is a standard type-C, type-D intersection that's required by the DOT. It's not a full-blown queue where you can pull off, no, I thought queue, I'm sorry. A, a separated lane for turning movements where you have a certain distance that allows you to queue up cars so you can stack them in in case the traffic is too high. It only has a little slip lane, so it allows you to slow down and speed up basically at the intersection. And that's a very standard intersection with most state roads. So it's not uncommon and doesn't surprise me at all at this location. Now, the other thing I want to look at, we just got the topo completed, um, obviously, in December seventh and eighth. So just last week, our crews got out there and they actually covered two different areas. One was obviously the thing that come on next regarding the bike path and location, the easements and the greasements that we're going to be putting together. The other is the topo survey of this area to determine what is the site distance and starting the design for one thirty-four. The biggest thing we're looking at right now is the site distance. But what I wanted to show you, because when I talked to the DOT, they mentioned how this road was just, I don't know if it's a full reconstruction or what they did, but they talked about improvements they made on one thirty-four within, what, five to ten years? So the people, so they talked about it and they said it. So we wanted to make sure we checked it, but looking at Lagoon Road right now and using the site distance of three and a half feet up and how far can you see down the road at three and a half feet? When you look at an eye level of a person sitting in a car to see obviously the top of the car or the eye level of another car, how far can you see? Right here is the profiles of two. The top one, as you can see right here, is the minimum distance required by the DOT according to the FDM manner of how far you have to see to make a safe left-hand turn to get up. So from here, I can see easily that three and a half feet up and it has enough site distance to make a safe turn at Lagoon Road where it is right now. Which makes sense because if they went through the reconstruction, they would have looked at it, so it doesn't surprise me. The bottom one, and I'm showing this because it's kind of interesting to me, that the site distance requirement, the distance here that is desired, recommended. What is, I'll give you an example, bike paths. The DOT width of bike paths is ten feet, but they do allow eight. So here, this is their minimum and we can easily go further. Here is what their desire is and we have a conflict. You can see that the knob right here that cuts off, which is the issue I think we're going to be dealing with, obviously, doesn't allow the existing Lagoon Road to see far enough to meet the desired length. So I show it to you because that's exactly what we're going to be looking at next when we start the design and what the biggest thing I have to do in order to determine what the scope of this work is.
So when you're looking at site distance, I mean, you said that that's the distance for a car to make a turn. If there's a larger vehicle coming out of that space, does that distance need to change? Or is that, that's the default, that's your limiting factor?
What's interesting about it, and it's different ways of looking at it. So what the thing is, if I'm sitting here parked on Lagoon and I'm trying to make a decision on whether or not I can make that turn, right? It's not necessarily the guy making the turn, it's if this car can see and slow down enough with the speed they're coming to not get hit in the back.
Okay.
So if it's a large truck or a small truck or something, or a turtle, the person coming over top of this hill should have enough time, if he's watching, to be able to stop. But they need to be able to make enough distance to pull up in order to see it. So it kind of goes hand in hand. So for example, once this becomes a T-intersection, how much time do you need to cross the road? Versus how much time do you need to pull up in front of traffic? It's two different distances and different site things. So right now, we just focus on what we think is the worst-case scenario. But the size of the truck, for example, if I was sitting in a bigger truck, you're also not at three and a half feet, which is what's designed to one of these little cars is what they look at.
Okay.
And so honestly, having a truck usually helps. But to be honest, you got a knob here, no matter how high I raise it, at some point, you're going to run into that, that that's where we're having the concerns.
Thank you.
So I wanted to show this, and again, in fact, it's cut off, but this is the plat that was recorded. So this is what we have, like I said, obviously, Kentsheway does not come through, there must have been issues and why they changed it. Over here, Vineyard Way, you can see that there was a lot of look at this with the water tower down here. So there was some discussion about how to make this happen with the right-of-way width and how it looks. But at the end of the day, that's what we have to match into. So that's set. So we started looking at alignments. And I would tell you right now, this is not accurate. Okay, we didn't have information. I put this together two weeks ago, so I'm going to point some things out. And you can see that this is the right-of-way line, you see how it's all shifted, kind of to the left?
Joe, can you go back one slide?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, you were talking about, um, Kentsheway. So that has, that was supposed to go to one thirty-four?
Well, I wasn't here for the history, but the information that I got from the DOT when it was submitted back in two thousand sixteen had Kentsheway connecting to one thirty-four. So at some point, it was discussed, but I have no idea why it was pulled from the table, why they changed it. Obviously, there were some other changes, like you can imagine, I'm sure there's stories behind it. From what I could tell, they looked at both. And I think when they got to the DOT, the realization of realigning Lagoon Road, which is kind of, they got this note right here at the plat saying Lagoon Road has to be realigned, that they probably could not get permission for having two accesses and so therefore, that one was eliminated. I'm guessing. I'm asking, I was not there, I'm not sure. But at some point, I guarantee you with this discussion and why you stopped short, I guarantee you that this control point here was also impacted in those discussions. But that's an assumption. All right, go on. I got context specifically related to what the hell you're talking about. I just had a conversation with-
Oh, uh, because of-
Can you zoom up?
No, no, I actually, could I, what, what my advice would be if I could share? Is that we just, uh, continue with the presentation and then we actually have a, a time slot allowed.
Right.
Thank you.
So, but again, you're asking a question, I'm making a lot of assumptions here, I was not parting, so I'm just going to-
Okay.
I don't know, but I can tell you that there's obviously a change from what I see in sixteen to what was actually recorded. I don't see if people hear this. Well, this is two thousand fifteen, it was reported from Wisconsin, right-of-way.
All right, thanks.
Cool. Anyway, this is alignment. What I was telling you about is, don't get caught up right now with what we're showing in the right-of-way because shadows and GAS provided by Dean Tony for free, they never line up perfectly. So I'm showing you this, we see like here's the existing road and you see it's all shifted up there. And you got the shadows all over here. We just wanted to match into, kind of show you sort of alignment. It's all getting better once we get the actual data from the topo and go out there. But this here is somewhat of the design that was proposed before. It is a little bit different, the curving gutter ties in, we provide some drainage improvements through here. This is a standard type-D, C-intersection with the DOT. This is going to be very close, if not matching what we have currently to the cell. So this is all based on counts. And now, this is what I want to show you. This is part of the FDM manual and this is also the worst-case scenario that could possibly occur with this intersection. When you look at it and some of the differences, it's these turn lanes. You can see the difference, both cars pulling in to be able to make a right-hand turn and cars here that can turn inward. That obviously widens the intersection and also the area that has to be improved in order to get an intersection like that. A lot of it is based on first, what type of road is it? Is it a two-lane or a four-lane road? And then it's also based on traffic counts. So do both roads exceed twenty-five hundred vehicles per day? And do the side roads exceed five hundred vehicles per day? Here it's down to twelve fifty and one hundred, and it has to be both. If none of these criteria match, you go to intersection C and D. So once we submit it over to them and we show the data to the DOT, they're going to give us feedback on if they agree or disagree with what we're interpreting with their FDM manual. So I show these to you because obviously, I want you to get a feel for what the distance is and what the possibilities are because we really don't know. But that's why here in the fall, when I was contacted about get going on the design, I'll get going, but I really need to get the involvement of the DOT at some point to get feedback and that takes a lot of time. So with that being said, we're obviously looking at the different things that can be proposed. You've got the intersection, we have a possibility of something like this, which can impact in front of a farmhouse that you're probably pretty familiar with who it is, that's still in the township and obviously goes back quite a ways. Now, you can see that, again, this is not necessarily what is projected because if you ask me right now, what is the ADT for this road in a road that doesn't connect? Well, this one's zero. Okay, that's pretty easy. This one here is very minimal, it's not even close to a hundred. And I don't, and they're going to see that as well. So there's not a lot of traffic at this time, but what could happen and what we're going to talk about next is the schedule. So when I get into this, and obviously, I want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on here. This is something that we changed from when I talked to you last time. We already have coordinated with the DOT to ask them some preliminary questions. What is we required to remove Lagoon Road? What is their schedule, what is the requirements? And is the same as what we thought. Until you make a work within right-of-way permit, it's fine the way it is. But that doesn't say what you've already made agreements on, it doesn't say what your wishes are. But it is under your control that when you say, "We would like to request a work within right-of-way permit", they are going to put those requirements that we just went through, we're preparing for that. What I had next is a survey that we wanted to complete before I didn't have it, now it's done. So we just got it, I was able to look at it and we're able to do the plan view. But right now, my focus over the next month is that profile view. Because that site distance that we talked about, we found out is the issue. But how much do I have to fill the road? Or how much do I have to, you know, go in order to transition in? Those are the things I have to figure out before I go back to the DOT. Now, just to make sure, I cannot in a DOT road go to where the site distance issue is and go up really fast and go back down because obviously, there's requirements in the FDM manual about transition. How long, how long of a vertical curve I can have? You can't just do the speed bump and just exaggerate in order to design this. That's why we really don't know the scope of the limits yet because I don't know how far this project's going to be chased. Looking ahead, one of the things I do want to switch is that we talked about coming back to you before I submit to the DOT to give you another update. To be honest, what I know now, I'm recommending that I just go right to the DOT and get their initial feedback, not their approval, not final plans, it doesn't pay for us to waste the money because we might as well just submit something over to them to show them what we came up with, show the site distance and put some exhibits together and just get their initial take on it. Then, once I get that feedback, I would recommend that we come back and have another presentation like this with the results for the board and the Dancing Goat, so everybody's aware of what the requirements are. And then I'll have a lot better information. The two things I'm worried about is obviously, when they see it, is what their response is. So I can get something in, let's just say in February, give them a month to turn around, they get something back to me by March, we'll talk to them. This is not something where they're doing an official review. But I'm hoping that they're going to be able to tell me right now if there's modifications, do they want to change it? Is there any layout configuration, something that they see that they would like us to look at before we make an official submittal? The second thing that's really important, and this is kind of goes to what you just dealt with, the comment that was made at the beginning about roundabout versus signal. And that's a TIA that they did once and then required to do a second one. Here, we don't know what they're going to require. This is a very standard intersection, they might not ask us to do anything, might just agree with the recommendation. But if they ask you to do a traffic impact analysis, our focus won't be on designing the intersection. Our focus is going to be getting new traffic counts, coming up with recommendations, projecting the traffic that's going to be there after it's built. And those are things that they're going to ask to see before we even start with the design. So I'm trying to get to that point because if they ask me to do the TIA, okay, that changes my schedule a lot. So once I get it, I get something to, to the DOT, they give me feedback, I come back and report to you and everyone to be open and, you know, upfront with what's going on. Once I have it, I'm coming up to you, then I think I can prepare plans, hopefully, to get good results here. Again, this is all conditional on what we find out. Then I can come back and start the plan preparation sometime in March to June. So if we know they want a type-C, type-D intersection, they agree with the traffic counts that we projected, we come back, we make a submittal, we put the plans together to show the limits of the improvements and we start finalizing some plans. Things that obviously we'd look at at that point is, once I got the plans done, they go back to the DOT with the work within right-of-way permit that they do their official review. Thickness of pavement, gravel, shoulders, do they have to be paved shoulders or do they have to be gravel shoulders? Taper lanes, clearing trees, all the site distance things that they require, all the things we have to submit to them for their approval that I will come back to them at that point and go from there. Obtain my permit. And the one thing that really worries me, obviously, that I've been concerned about, is acquisition of length. Now, I work for municipalities, I work for people like you, who tell you municipal law. It's pretty common to have disciplines. I got a whole other side of an entire office that does millions of dollars every year with the DOT. The process of the DOT is very selective and controlled. And it depends on what I find out. But if we find out that there is not enough right-of-way to complete the project, if I can get a design to fit within that sixty-six feet, you have to either negotiate or work on acquiring the land, which is what you're right to do. Now, I show that, and again, I'm going to go back quite a ways. Obviously, I didn't spend any time looking at this. I haven't designed it, I, we got preliminary stuff, but at the end of the day, I've not looked at the details. But I can see this. Is that this beautiful color pipe that's being proposed going from up here to here, it looks great on paper, but it doesn't look so great when it's shown on a private property. So I'm pointing this out because at the end of the day, I don't have control over everything. We have to let this follow through and there might be ways for us to modify this, to make this work, but I just don't know. So I share it with you because the first thing I do when I saw this is check to see who's the ownership of these different parcels and who could be impacted. Right now, you can see this right here, this is a water tower. And again, I know you have control over it, I hope you own it. But they also had a comment here about having this realigned so that this path doesn't come out here anymore than it comes out to Vineyard Drive. So I'm thinking that that will also be a requirement for you to have to deal with. So I'm predicting it, I don't have any answers. But I'm just letting you know that these are the things that I'm seeing that we're going to have to let work itself out for us to get to the final design, but I do see it coming. So I think you guys have put yourself in place. I wish I knew how much a TIF could do and honestly, I hope we can find you funding that could pay for it so you can use your TIF for other things, such as the water tower and things like that that you have going on. But at the end of the day, obviously, with the construction, I will keep proceeding because that's what I've been understood to do and keep this going through the DOT process so that we could possibly have construction next year. So I see the head nods, obviously, I won't go under that impression. But if there's ways to find funding, the one thing that will help you out is if you do have the plans set done, the funding that's available right now is something that's pretty active, that obviously, we're going to be looking at throughout this year, that hopefully, something can pop up at the right time to make this all work. So unless I hear anything different, that's what my direction is right now and obviously, why I wanted to give this presentation. So I'm turning back over to whatever's next on the agenda.
Well, we have questions and answers here from the village board. So, board members, trustees.
Well, I just, first want to thank you for putting all of us together. We've kind of talked about it in piecemeal, but seeing it all together is incredibly helpful and I just, thank you.
I could have told you, having a board like this so you can see it, everybody looks at the same thing, makes it times easier rather than handing you all papers like the last time, so.
Yeah, thank you so much.
This is definitely an asset.
Okay. Other questions over here?
I'm wondering about the, the acquisition. Can you just talk a little bit more about that?
Can you just talk a little bit more about that? So as I understand it, there may be some private properties, some homes that would, that seems severe to me.
I work for municipalities, so there's two ways to acquire a property. One, go talk to them, work something out, make it happen is a possibility. The other one is if it's determined to be a safety concern, there's a process for communities to go through acquisition. You're going to, I'm going to tell you right now, if you can avoid it and not want to pick fights or have issues, acquisition is not a fun process and never come up where somebody's really excited about it. So I'm just telling you right now, we will try to avoid it and we're not talking major acquisition. We're talking strips of land, maybe five feet, you know, one way or the other. It's not a major type of acquisition. So I'm just trying to be upfront with you, but the acquisition process and of course, our attorney's going to correct me if we're wrong, you have to do a resolution. You have to put it in there that you determine that it's a necessity. Then you have to go through an appraisal process. Then you have to get a negotiator that goes out to talk to them and if they don't like it, they have the chance to get their own person to come back in and do it. And then they got 60 days to respond and then they come back and then you can offer a jurisdictional offer to be able to take the land if you never come to an agreement. And so I've seen it before where it's gone good, I've seen it go bad and at the end of the day, you still have the right to do it, but I can guarantee you right now with how booked they are and how things are going, we don't have appraisers, we have negotiators in our office who sell up that stuff. We might as well plan another year. It's not easy getting an appraiser up there and again, that's what it all comes down to. You may be offered 2,003 acres. It could be anything depending on how much land is needed in order to do it. Permanent easements, limited easements, temporary easements are all different things, but we have our best luck in communities like this and because it's not the DOT process, you don't have to follow it. There's no federal funding, there's nothing like that that requires you to follow the official land acquisition process. That negotiation is the best way to do it and I really think we can come up with solutions with the DOT in order to do it, but I'm telling you right now, my goal is to avoid it if I can regardless.
Thank you.
All right, other questions?
Are there any steps that we can take now to, to help move things along, us as the board? I know obviously you've got many things that you're doing, but is there anything that we can do to help streamline things in the future, things we should think about?
Obviously, I think you've already authorized me to proceed and I kind of assumed that from the last meeting. We came out and did the topo. See, when it comes down to it. See, what's interesting is that you see the disturbance limits that are proposed right here where basically this road is never going to be touched. Now, because of that site distance concern, I don't know if I have to fill or cut in order of what is the best. So coming up with that distance on what it is and being able to evaluate how the road goes up and down, I got to get that determined over to them because at the end of the day, I can have my opinion like I showed you before on Lagoon. I got to get the DOTs and honestly, they're booked. They're swamped, they're working from home, the response timing is very good, but Rita and Wendy, the two people that you work with, they're good people. They are, they are, and they try and get back to you as best we can, but I don't think I want to make an official submittal until I get them the information that I'm looking at and see if we're on the same page, but there's really nothing you can do as a board except just keep the pressure on me to get it done.
I can do that.
Okay. Other questions? All right, then we go on to receiving some public comment and if anybody wants to talk about this presentation. Okay, Nick?
I have a multitude of comments for showing the board's benefit. Joe, can we go back to the slide where it shows the entire plot of the Rick House property? I think it was for a TIF. Yeah, perfect, go back one more.
For TIF?
Yeah. So right here, just so you know, because this is already.
Nick, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Part of our deal with the Rick House was our fire door variance that we had to give and part of that variance was the road is built, it's not actually legal, but then also it's only one egress entrance, so if we're fighting fires with winds coming to the south, they actually wouldn't be able to get close enough to the building to protect your guys' plant here. And so one of the things that we're going to have to do upon developing a second Rick House, which is about three, four years down the line at this point in time, is a hidden driveway here for fire access only. It's not even for our use, it'll only be for the fire department. And that is already cleared with Wendy at the DOT and it was actually a stipulation of Cambridge and the fire department and the variance itself. So you should know that if you're looking at planning this because if you are looking at lines of sight, correct, that you do have a hidden driveway here, it is going to impact what you're going to be forced to do here. So just wanted to give you that piece of information because you did not have it. Also anecdotal evidence, but this didn't go through because they wanted to make another lot there. That's from a conversation I had with Frank Gat two and a half years ago, which was a question that you asked him. From my standpoint, I appreciate the board acting so swiftly on something they claimed they could not, but I think that these are definite steps in the right direction. I would encourage you guys to continue working on this with him as you have been and we'd like to offer ourselves for any we can help. A lot of bad blood from the original planning and conversations around this and I find a lot of what you said to me originally, we were standing right there, exceptionally disingenuous compared to what you are now saying now, but I do like the tune of your song a lot more now. I appreciate your candor. We want things to be safe for our village and for my employees specifically, so we would encourage you guys to continue to work on this. If you guys have any needs or questions from me, you know, let me have them, but other than that, I don't have much, you know, we just got to get it done, I guess.
If you have one question.
Absolutely.
We were talking about, and I don't, I didn't see anything on that side of the road, but I guess if land acquisition has to lean towards Dancing Goat property?
Joe and I had a conversation, Lisa as well was involved in this conversation.
Oh, my gosh, did I step into something?
You will, you know, my, my comments earlier were alluding to this.
Okay.
So I feel like I was coerced into purchasing that to your job of land and because I never wanted to purchase it because I told him that I talked to Wendy at the DOT and they were going to make them fix the intersection whether we bought it or not and I did not want to be a part of a shell game. His response to me, verbatim, was if he overcomplicates it with too many landowners, the DOT won't make him do anything, in which case I responded that my intention is that it get fixed. And I also told him that if there was a situation of acquisition and you force me to buy this land, it will be the most expensive land in the entire world, in which case he told me that he would seize it with only a minute domain. So obviously, I don't have to negotiate with him. I can negotiate with you guys and if you are actually acting in good faith, Jane, I think he's going to help you guys out with that and through appropriate channels, I do not have the intention of making it the most expensive property in the country per my terms. But I'd just like to go back to, I really appreciate when people deal in good faith with the right intentions. Don't make comments like that. So that's what I have to say about it. I think you know me on a very intimate business level. I'm not the type of person to do things like that when I don't feel I'm being forced to. And so again, if this is for the benefit of the community and if it's to fix the road for a safe operating thing for me and Sean to drive barrels to our barrel house, I'm absolutely willing to work with you guys in good faith in an appropriate way that would allow acquisition and construction of that road, as long as that road was not hindered by someone's intent to cheapen out or make a less intrusive intersection because I don't think that's right for my employees or me. But again, if this is per DOT regulations and guidelines and there is no intent to overcomplicate things for the benefit of, you know, things that shouldn't be benefited, then I have no problem with, with participating in an acquisition conversation that does not cut off your right leg, so to speak.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right.
I have one question.
Can you send that to Mike or can I get a copy of this from you or from you? Because it's kind of hard to read some of the details on that top right corner.
Yeah, if you forward it to me, Charlie.
Appreciate it, baby.
Paul, why don't you come up?
I just had a question based on something that you had said at the beginning when we were talking about sightlines and where things needed to go. It was sightlines per four miles per hour.
60 miles an hour.
If we were going to redo this road and put this other road in there, I know we've asked the DOT before to have a reduction of speed.
Yeah.
Could we get a reduction of speed and then that might impact?
Sight distance.
What that sight distance would be?
Yeah.
Because if you could even get a graduated smaller one, is that something that we would want to pursue as well? That's just what I'm, that was my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll respond when it's done because I, like I said, I definitely want to respond, but.
Okay, just hold on that. Let's see if we have anything else. Any other questions from the general public? All right, we'll bounce it back to you and then we'll talk about possible action in the future here.
So obviously to cover the different ones, the easy one is there at the end about the distance. You're right. You have to design for five miles over the post to see the speed limit. DOT requirements, there's no change in it, but obviously if it's 55, you design for 60. If you design it to four, or you can change the speed limit to 45 and design to 50, obviously shortens down sight distance because now you have slower speeds. This is the issue I want to be frank on. You can post whatever you want, what are people driving?
Yeah.
And that's one thing that they look at. The DOT won't change the speed without being able to evaluate it because if you don't slow down traffic or they don't slow down anyway, they're still going at speed and that's what they're going to look at before you evaluate, can you lower the speed? You have the ability to lower the speed 10 miles an hour if you are in control of it. I'm almost positive 134 is still under DOT control, so that's not going to be something that you can offer up. So yes, you're absolutely correct. My fear is, is that they're not going to consider it. They're going to make me design it to 60 miles an hour. So I can predict it. I obviously don't know, but I just want to make sure. Obviously, Nick, we'll go through a couple of things, but I want to make sure I go through what was said. I obviously don't know if it was for a lot, so that makes sense too. I wasn't there, so that wouldn't surprise me at all if that was the case. So if that was it, obviously that was part of different discussions at some point. It was approved by the board, so therefore it is what it is. I can just show you what was done. The other conversation I've got to say, and obviously again, it sounds personal between us and I'm not, not clear of the whole history of it, but at the end of the day, there is some merit to obviously saying there could be complications with what it is, that tier drop drop that was bought by it. I know the discussion was also talked about here and whether or not you guys want to own it. And again, when it comes to construction and the safety of this intersection, it, there is no way I can design something that doesn't meet FDM standards. I cannot put an unsafe intersection. It will be approved early, they will not let us in the right way unless it meets their standards. So even me thinking that I could do something like that is not even possible. So to say that I was out there thinking that I can try and do this, at the end of the day, you guys already accepted that this is going to be done. It's already under a certain standard that you guys don't control, neither does MSA. So there's no way at all that I could have the ability to even promise or say that there's a way to get away or do something that isn't to FDM standards. There's minimum and maximums, there's sight distance, there's things that they can look at, but that's all under the direction of the DOT. So again, some of the comments that we stated are honestly ain't upfront. This has always been my intent. It's coming. I'm worried not only about the construction, because we'll get through that, it's also the funding. So those are the two things that I've always focused for you. That's how I approach every project because it's always nice to design and do it. Again, you tell me, "Go ahead and get it done," we're going to do it. Whatever the way it is, we're going to get this done for you, but you still have to fund it. I will agree, Nick, and what's going on here, that a cooperative working relationship with them is almost a given. It's expected. They can cooperate, we can do that. There's options available to you, that is a possibility, but at the end of the day, you both need each other. You've got an exceptional business that's coming into town, putting something in here that's pretty rare. That's what was approached, that's what we're seeing and there's actually the progress of being made. There's no way in heck that you guys can ignore that fact. So at the end of the day, we do have to get this, we want it to be safe. It's nice to know that we do have the proper sight distance that was approved by the DOT with Lagoon Road, so it can stay, but at some point, this has to connect. It's coming. So now we can set up funding for you, we can start planning for it, we can get the design and once you're ready to put it out for bid, that will obviously come back to you and get that ready to go and get the work done. So with it, if I said something against, I'm going to apologize because I have no intention of doing anything different than I said right now. Yes, if I have concerns or stuff, you're going to be the first person I approach, so I'm saying it out here in public, everybody wears. The mono layer that we're going to need to construct it is going to be more of a temporary basis to put fill in and actually need to provide it. I can't work on it, so we're going to have to have the ability to work on it and again, at the end of the day, those are things that we're going to have to work out once we get a design approved by the DOT. Once it's approved, you do a right-of-way plan to determine what has to be acquired and then you can decide what process to go through and we're not even close to that. So I hope to avoid it, but if I can't, obviously I hope to be able to work with people to get it done and at the end of the day, we'll get there.
All right.
Any questions?
Well, I have one for Lisa and for Jane. We're talking now about possible action. What are we suggesting here?
You know, I think what we had contemplated for that is, do you want Joe to proceed as, as he's discussing now or, you know, any changes? This would be a good time if, if any of you have any concerns with him proceeding as he discussed.
I think the biggest thing I would like to hear from you is, obviously I think the understanding is to proceed. I think it is, do you want to see what I find out with the sight distance once I start looking at it before I submit it to the DOT or start to get their initial opinion so I can come back to you with what we're going to be dealing with and whether or not we have to do the TIA.
And you're going to get on that right away because it's due into DOT by February?
Well, this is your schedule. If you say don't submit it to them, I don't have to. I'm looking at, that's when I think I can get it into them. And I gave them a month to respond, so I'm assuming you're going to tell me to proceed. My goal is to get it in, but there's no schedule that they have. They, if you don't submit anything, they don't care.
Do you think it's going to be a motion for Joe to proceed?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All right, all those in favor of having Joe proceed, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, hearing none.
I have a second question about procedure on 134 though. In several other conversations for 134, we've talked about an amendment regarding the winery in 134 and Lagoon Road and we've requested it be looked at legally if we can adjust that. So I'd like to look at that potentially at the next, I don't know why I said potentially, potentially, at the next, next meeting. I don't know if we need a motion.
Well, why don't we hold on that until we get to referrals, staff, future items. If you don't mind, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Get it.
Thank you.
All right, Joe, you've got your, your indication here where we're going to go. All right. Okay, that takes care of that. Let's move on to C. Discussion and possible action regarding the real estate transaction agreement related to the easements for the bike trail. Lisa or as is Jane?
I'll just, I'll just launch here.[1650.36]
I'll just launch here. Really, I'm seeking your direction on whether you like this general approach. And this is kind of what we talked about at the last meeting. You know, in broad strokes, what the village would do under this is create a resolution to release your easement of the old bike path in exchange for the new bike path, both from the winery and from Dancing Goat. And so we decided to craft it kind of like a real estate transaction because that resolution would be conditioned on getting the new easements. This just takes a clean slate approach to the whole thing. You know, we separate, just like any other real estate transaction, separate those things that are unrelated and just make this, you know, really it is kind of like a real estate transaction. We would have a closing date. So if you agree that this approach makes sense generally, I've asked Mr. DeYoung to help me just identify the attachments that we'd need to add to this agreement. You know, the property descriptions of Dancing Goat and the winery, and then also of the easements. And then I could draft up the resolution that would release those easements. But you can see the language. There's just a few things. If we go ahead with this approach, then I'd ask, you know, Dancing Goat and the winery to make the representation about what kinds of liens or encumbrances they have on their property that we just add into the agreement. So that's, in broad strokes, I'm happy to answer any questions, of course. But if you agree with that approach, then what I would do next is ask Mr. DeYoung to supply the attachments, at least his piece of the attachments, so then we would share with Dancing Goat and the winery formally the easement. So far, we've just kind of kept them in the loop that this is what we're proposing, but we haven't. I won't share that with them formally until I get your approval to do so.
Has the goat reviewed this?
I'm sorry, has who?
Has the goat had an opportunity to review?
So I've just, we've just sent him what we've sent you, just to say that we're going to present it to the board.
And that came in with the agenda?
Yes, exactly. But his attorney has reached out and said, of course, he wants to talk about it with Nick once we have, you know, once we have it tied in a bow with the exhibits. But we won't, I won't ask Joe to go through those motions unless you, you know, unless you agree, at least conceptually, that this is the right approach. We talked about it, you know, generally in the last meeting, but here's what it looks like on paper.
Thank you.
So we need a motion then?
I'll make a motion. I don't know what I'm making.
Is there a question back here, Mark?
I just want to make a comment. You know, we submitted that letter about a month ago regarding the bike path, but I just, I know it makes sense to try to keep it clean, but I just want to remind you guys, the CSM, the drainage issues that we're hearing about these homeowners, it's all connected. So I just want to make that statement. I know we put our proposal on the table. We will review it with our council, but just want to let that be known because I think we've already put our proposal on the table. We have not received a response on that.
All right, okay.
Yeah, so this would replace that. This would say, okay, in exchange for the old bike path, we'll get you the new bike path. And I think, I mean, our idea behind this is that everybody benefits from that arrangement and that those issues are important, but they have other processes that we can follow to deal with that. So that's the approach that we're proposing to the board.
All right. We'll let you know who pays.
Thank you. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was trying to, I wanted to make a motion to move forward with the action. I'm in the wrong section. I'm sorry. With the easement for the bike trail documentation presented in the agenda.
All right.
I will second that.
Okay, I think we've got moving ahead with the real estate transaction regarding the easements to the bike trail. Okay, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, carries. All right. We'll look forward to your work product here, Jane. Okay, let's move on now to item D. Discussion and possible action regarding ARPA funds, Cambridge Community Library.
Yes. Well, we had a very lengthy and detailed discussion on December 8th. Really kind of looked throughout the budget and Joan put something together about, she generally gives a 3% wage increase. We were looking at either a 4% or 5% wage increase. We really kind of looked through everything. We talked everything about how many, you know, CDs and DVRs are being ordered now because those are less popular. We looked at, does everybody get a wage increase? We looked at cutting positions perhaps. They've already cut their hours down quite a bit. We talked about the $118,000 fund, $30,000 of which, so that came out at the meeting, has to do with the vacation buyout for Joan when she retires. There's $40,000 of that that really can't be touched. That's four items that are unforeseen. Literally when we were there at the meeting, we looked up and there were two large stains in the ceiling. So somebody's going to have to come up and look through there and see. It might be minor. It might be major. So I feel like we really did take a look thoroughly at the budget and voted on where we could do the wage increases and came up with the 5% wage increase. That's a total annual cost of $5,648.24. We knew we were going to get the $5,000. I verified that with Chrissy and Lisa. What's on the table right now is the ARPA funding, the $5,000, which isn't going to quite cover this. So I am going to be making a motion for the ARPA funding to cover essentially this 5% wage increase. I've been told by Jacob, the treasurer, that the library is still over budget. It's going to continue to be over budget, but this seemed like a fair thing to do. So that's the motion I'm going to make. Questions?
Yeah, questions.
Do we do questions now or after the motion?
Well, we've got, we've got a motion here. She's, Chris is making a motion. Anybody care to make a second?
Well, I'll second the motion to increase the 5% wage increase.
Now we have, we can have discussion?
And actually, the motion would be changing the village's former motion on the ARPA funds. We put the remainder of what was left from this year to the media replacement, which is starting right now. We're paying for it in full either way, so taking 5,000 less from the water media project and giving those funds to the library. So it would be altering the previous action, giving 5,000 to the library due to their lost funding from, due to COVID.
Right.
So my question with this is, the 5% wage increase, and we've had a conversation about equity. And this was equitable because this is what the village was getting. So that's great. At a 5% increase, still the person at the top of that is getting a nice 5% raise where the person at the bottom, I think it's a dollar and change, and the person still at the bottom is still like 28 cents.
Yep.
And this doesn't really address the wage equity. Is the library board considering, because I know we've done it in the past, a one-time adjustment for those at the bottom and then coming back to talk about ARPA funds additionally?
It was on the table. It came up, and it was not met with agreement with regard to the two top people, Joan being one of them, not getting the additional, the 5%, just across the board, 5% raise.
Great, but this is, that's a person invested, whose salary is invested in that as well. Was that also the feeling from the library president?
Yes.
And the other members of the library board?
I mean, there was, there was minimal discussion, I would say, about it, but it was definitely on the table.
Okay. Well, I would invite you to look at that again, and perhaps closed session is an option for that.
We did go into closed session. We definitely went into closed session. Yeah. I mean, it was a two and a half hour meeting.
I apologize.
I mean, it was a good discussion. I mean, we really had a very robust conversation about, you know, ways that, you know, it could be cut or not cut. I mean, it was just, it just kept coming back to they are already over budget. They will continue to be over budget.
Of all the things now that you could budget, I think that would be the direction. You put it towards the personnel for livable wages.
Yes, we talked about that, and Jacob's estimate was that we would have to increase the budget by $11,000 to make it really a true cost of living equitable wage for the staff there, which was kind of a bit discouraging, quite frankly, but 5% is better than the 3% that they typically get.
Other questions? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We better do a roll call.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Geller?
Yes.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Shaffer Weiss?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to fire commission update. In your packet, there is some email, emails. And I, this is from Paul Blount at the EMS. And I've got to give him credit. He called me up to let me know that there was a situation involving a rescue call to Home Again. Happened at 2:30 in the morning, and it took 28 minutes. Now, when this came through, it came to us here in Cambridge. They didn't have people on staff. There were supposed to be six, and four of them have resigned, and they're in the process of finding some new ones and expect to do so yet this month, but they didn't have them, so.
Four people out of six resigned from the EMS?
Yes, they did.
When did they do that?
Then you go out of service.
Yes, I understand that. When was that?
In the last, I want to say the last 40 days.
In the last 40 days? So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So then the call for Home Again was routed over to Deer Grove, and they were unavailable because of multiple EMS calls in their district. Then it gets routed to Edgerton, and they were unable to respond, and there was no explanation given. Then Marshall, their fire and EMS was dispatched, and that was at 2:40. And they arrived here at 2:40, 2:57, and it took 27 minutes. That's a very long time, but I, you know, it was, I followed up to see if there was any complications, and there weren't, so we were fortunate. But I have to give Paul credit, Paul Blount credit, because he did inform, he called me up the next day with this information. So I think we've made it clear that, you know, we are concerned about, you know, responsiveness, and this happened. So that's the news that I have to share with you.
But he's working hard on getting it fully staffed again.
They're doing that, and I've been given assurance that they, I don't know if they'll be fully staffed, but they're adding people in December. I thought it was.
I thought it was two, wasn't it?
Yeah, there were two that are coming up, so, and they'll be adding more. All right? So that's the, that's my update for the fire and EMS commission. There is not a meeting for the fire and EMS. There's not a meeting until April. We're not getting together, but we will be talking at a future time about the referendum, so I won't go into that tonight. All right, let's move on to new business. That's just unfinished business. Discussion and possible action, Village of Cambridge approving election inspectors for the 2022-23 election cycle. Lisa?
Every two years, state statute, we have to appoint election workers. We can add people as we go. At the same time, the parties can add, request workers to be added to our list. So you'll see, we have our former workers from the village with three chief inspectors, and there were four names submitted by the Republican Party, which have been added, none of which live in the village, but by state statutes, if they're in the county, they can be appointed. So I did reach out to verify that those people did in fact want to be in the village. There were five names submitted. One said, no, he's going to be working at a central location somewhere else. So these are our current workers, as well as those requested by the party.
Who were the ones requested by the party?
There is four on the list with the R after for the, from the Republican Party. We did not receive any names from the Democratic Party.
Is that something that normally happens?
No. In all my years here, I think I've received one name in the past from, it was a village resident. So this is the first time.
Well, we don't have four inspectors from the Republican Party.
We have to add them per state statute.
Jesus.
So if a party requests and the people do want to serve, they're added to the list.
Okay, other questions? Let's see, you need a motion on this? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't see you.
Since this is a quasi agenda item, I would like to take Paula Hollenbeck's spot for an evening shift on the list.
Okay. We can add you to the list.
That's all right, Paula?
Do you still want to be on the list, Paula, or to work?
I can be on the list for any election, you know, if I am not running.
Yes, exactly. Okay, but Chris, we can add you to it.
I mean, there's no other party affiliation on here. I don't know what to do with the.
State statutes, the party can submit names, and you have to, and then there's statutes we have to follow that they have to.
Do we want to reach out to the other parties and?
We don't reach out. They submit the names.
Oh, I see. This is a lack of reaching. Got it.
They submit names.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion for approval of these?
When do you need this approved by?
Now, by the end of the year.
Got it. Oh, got it.
And parties have to submit the names by December 1st.
Okay, okay.
You can put me as an independent?
Yeah, everybody else on the list is independent. It's just those that come from the, the party.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve the list of election inspectors for 2022-23 election cycle.
Second.
With the?
With the inclusion of Chris.
Thank you. Okay, I can have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries. Okay, let's move on. Discussion and possible action regarding the foundation grant request. Looks like we've got three of them here. Pole shed for the yardway site.
Carla, I don't know. Do you want to take, there's two recommendations from Public Works.
I'm sorry, that's me. There was a request submitted by Public Works Director Bruning about a pole shed for yardway site. It has a gravel base, and that is located in your packet from London Lumber. And then there was an issue with siding and gutters for well number two, which was another recommendation from Public Works, that those be updated. I'm a little concerned about that second one, only because I'm concerned there's more structural issues, but I'll start with that one. Known issues. And then I'll go with number three because I would like to submit a grant request for the Welcome to Cambridge sign, should the Welcome to Cambridge sign funds have been absorbed by the, at some point. I don't know how that works.
All right. Well, do we want to do the first two? And then we can get into, because you're kind of getting into three here.
I did, I went great for it.
Yeah, so let's just, the pole shed for the yardway site.
We will see, quote did come in that was less than what was discussed at Public Works, 13, 555.
You care to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to send the pole shed for the yardway site to the foundation.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, siding and gutters for well number two.
I'll make a motion to request siding and gutters for well number two from the Cambridge Foundation.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Now, additional grant requests brought forth by village board members. We'll start with you, Paula. You wanted to, I'm sorry, not Paula.
Wishful thinking.
I'm going to start with you, Carla.
Yeah, so many moons ago, there was a request for a Welcome to Cambridge sign, and it was approved, and the village paid for half of it, and I've seen an invoice where we did pay for it, some of it, half of it. And the foundation was going to cover the secondary part. And it is unclear where the secondary fund part exists, if the foundation held on to it or if it was sort of reabsorbed into the borg.
I think it's in our reserves, so we will.
If it hasn't been checked, if it exists, fantastic. We'll utilize that soon, hopefully. If it has been absorbed, then I would like to request those funds to finish that sign project. Please.
Do you know how much it is?
I think it was $7,000, roughly around $7,000. But potentially, I do need to call back because that is, again, like several years ago now, I do have a phone call in with the sign maker to find out if there, since that first part to now, if there are additional funds. And so I'll take what the foundation originally agreed to. I mean, I could keep that amount, and then we could circle back to the village if there's additional funds, which I don't know yet. But some money has been put down. I think it was like $6,700 was on the invoice.
All right. All right. How do we feel? I mean, do we want to do this? I, I just feel like.
Do we, do we know where we're going to put it?
So Lisa was working on making a login for the DMV. That was the first step.
DOT.
Oh, I'm sorry.
DOT.
DOT. So that was the first step. We do need to submit our locations and we have two locations to put in with that application. However, going back to the, this has been kicked down to the economic development, or kicked up to the economic development committee. And we need to just finalize that, everything, before we send it to the DOT, because the DOT likes you to come correct when you do your application. So we're just following up on a lot of, I don't know, pieces and trying to put the whole thing back together. So the answer to that is kind of, but yeah.
The chamber had two sites that they were, they had originally submitted the paperwork to DOT. It was the wrong paperwork. Now that the chamber has dissolved, we have to create to be a new entity to apply for the signs and reevaluate if those two spots are still valid that the chamber had, had looked at.
That's right.
Wasn't the, didn't the chamber have money for the Welcome to Cambridge? Is that, is that what you're talking about, the, that money?
Yeah, so some of it was put down with the sign, was on the invoice for the sign company. So some money was put in there. The, the chamber was going to kick back the other, because you have to pay for it first, before they pay the other half. So that part was done and we just never got to the, they pay the other half, because, I don't know. COVID, the committee stopped meeting, the chamber dissolved. Actually, the newspaper called me today to get a story about the Welcome to Cambridge sign.
It's been going on for a long time.
I know. And I, so I really want to tie it up.
Going on since I started here 18 years ago.
I really want to tie it up. I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so if, I'm trying to figure out where the money is. This is my backup plan. If the money was absorbed, then I'd like to put in the request to reinstate it.
Did I hear there is, there is money, did you say, Lisa, in the reserves?
We have to double check. I believe there is money in reserves from the foundation that we received and was put aside for the signs. So we will verify that and double check that.
Didn't we also get money back when the chamber?
That was not from the signs per se. That was that grant that we had given them. They didn't use it all. And when they folded, they gave that back.
So are we going to, do we feel like we, we want to ask the, the, or the community foundation for this? Even though we may already have it?
We will double check before we would ask. But if it is not enough, because time has elapsed and if we need additional funding, it could be for what may still be needed.
So you're saying we don't do anything about this tonight?
No. If we'd want to request, after we verify, if we have the money in reserves, if that is enough for, if Carla gets an updated quote, what it's going to cost, see if we have enough money. If we don't, we could, we wouldn't know a dollar amount today, but we'd figure out before the end of the year what that dollar amount would be that we'd need to ask for.
Yeah. I'm just looking for a motion to move forward with the funds for the signage. Should there be overages? And additionally, should we not be able to find those dollars? But I can get you a dollar amount before the application. It's going to be under $10,000, I'm guessing.
Do you want to make a motion?
I do. I'm making a motion to put in a request to the Cambridge Foundation for additional dollar funds, dollar amount to be determined for the Welcome to Cambridge sign.
Okay.
I will second.
All right. Any, any need for further discussion?
No.
All right, roll call. Well, no, this isn't roll call, because we're not spending it. It's just.
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's. All right. I had asked about the bricks. Chris, did you have a chance? You were going to get maybe some pricing on that for the bricks on the, between the sidewalk and the road? You know, the little bricks all the way up and down?
How was supposed to be a pricing? What was that?
Oh, I thought that was a Public Works.
We talked about it in Public Works. There was also some discussion about other options, other aggregate. There was, we talked about potentially getting a grant for it.
Yeah, or cement.
Yeah. But we never came to anything other than.
Okay. All right. You know what? We've got three here, which is.
We don't, I wouldn't have any kind of dollar amount from Public Works on that.
I didn't know. I didn't see it, so.
No, thanks, Mark. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Anything else that we want to request from the foundation? All right. Okay. Let's move on. We've got discussion and possible action regarding the no village board meeting of December 28th.
Typical, we usually cancel the last meeting in December due to the holidays, but need formal board action to do so.
I'll make a motion regarding no village board meeting, December 28th.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we're off. Gary, you don't have to be here. Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding authorization for the clerk administrator and treasurer to approve and sign payables checks after the December 14, 21 village board meeting through the end of the year.
So tied to that, not having a meeting, if bills come in that are due, we don't want to be late waiting until the next board meeting. What we typically do is run the bills and then provide at the first meeting in January, the listing of all the bills that were paid in that time period.
Okay. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion regarding the authorization for the clerk administrator and treasurer to approve and sign payables checks after the December 14, 2021 village board meeting through the end of the year.
All right.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's. Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding slivers of village owned, slivers?
Slivers.
Of village owned land, economic development committee. Carla?
Yeah. So the economic development committee was doing an audit of Cambridge's potential assets for economic development. And we had two realtors who graciously took their time to come in. One was Ben Becker and Laurie Johnson of Johnson Real Estate. And I think, Mark, you mentioned Roxanne and Deshiller?
Roxanne Schiller and Richard Nelson.
Yeah. So they were there kind of overseeing what was a series of properties that I, I termed, we can't come up with a better name, the slivers. They're just little pieces that range in, in price and value technically. A couple of them are, are not, we're not looking at. There's a Melster site. There's, there's some with, that are larger than about a quarter acre that may or may not have commercial value. So these are the little pieces that after the history of the village has been altered, that these, you can't access them. Sometimes they're part of right of ways. They're trapped in other people's pieces. They're just like the little debris of land that's gone around over the years. And so one of the things that we wanted to take back to the economic development committee is the process of merging these pieces and getting them off the village's ownership and to the adjacent landowner's ownership, should they want it. But it would be a one-time request, at least, this will be our first request, to see if the adjacent landowner is interested in purchasing that property, looking at it in terms of square footage at this point, because these aren't accessible pieces of property. There's no like equivalent assessment to come forth. Kevin, who works from Hometown Bank, is on the economic development committee and he was giving some guidance as to how we could go through that process. Homeowners can make an offer. The village can also come up with a price for square foot and the negotiations for some of those pieces can be put together. And then they would record that transfer of ownership with the county. So that's what we wanted to move forward with as an economic development project, is just getting those little pieces off the village's property, handing them, or, you know, allowing the landowner to purchase them. And I need village approval to see if you want to move forward with that project.
I think it's a good idea.
Thanks.
Sounds like a lot of paperwork though, too.
Well, that's why we want to do it now, like as a one time, not, at least this time. If we decide, set up another board and another time decides to give it another go, this would be a good time for us to alert everybody. Let's get, you know, let's do this. If you're interested, now's the time, instead of having a piecemeal approach to it. It's not, not paperwork, but it's a good time.
There's the question of who would pay for the closings and so forth. And it's not on the agenda, but two pieces of those properties are behind Chris's house. And he's talked over the years of wanting to purchase those. He did provide a written offer.
Okay.
For what Kevin, you know, if a landowner. And I, sorry, I didn't grab it from upstairs today. I just came from an appointment. But an offer of $10,000 for those two pieces behind his property.
Does a, does a CSM need to be drafted as part of that?
No, actually, because it's an adjacent piece of property and you can, and combining pieces is much easier than separating pieces. So the combining, so that's why the adjacent landowner is your ideal landowner. If you have somebody buying the middle swatch sliver of a piece of property that you surround, that's problematic. So that's why we're asking the adjacent landowner for merger, merger purposes.
And that would be up to them, if they do a CSM to combine them all into one lot.
Yeah.
They could be assessed as separate lots as they, you know. Right now, the village lots are not assessed, obviously. But if they took ownership, they, it could stay a small lot, or they could opt to do a CSM to merge it all into one.
So the reason they might want to merge it is if that property line, and they want to put up a shed, and that property line is not in accordance to where you can put a shed, they may want to fully merge it with the CSM, but, and that may be something that they want to do.
They did that over at the Easter building when he wanted to put his deck on. He bought that little sliver way in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a lot of slivers. And like the value of the sliver is, is hard, it was hard to come up what defines a sliver, because some slivers could be bigger, but they're landlocked, they don't have access. So that was the other thing to kick back down to the economic development, is to really define what we want to get rid of, what really doesn't have village value. And then determine the process to communicate with the homeowners. But I can't really do any of that until the board decides that this is something they want to move forward. But I think the economic development committee can return to the board with the process for a fruit of all.
I think it's a good idea. Basically, you flip to the village. Homeowners can value, you know, get some money from the sale. I think it's, we should move forward with it, so.
Okay.
Paula, make a motion to, of the economic development committee to proceed with the sale of the slivers of village owned land to adjacent homeowners.
I'll second it.
All right. Discussion?
The only thing I'd want to see is a cost to benefit analysis of how much it's going to cost the village versus long-term, what we're going to get from tax money. If, if we're going to be losing money, not that I don't, Chris, you can still buy your chunks of land. I don't care. But if we're going to be doing these and the homeowners don't want them, then what, you know, what do you do? If these people don't want these little slivers of land, do you, do you go to the other side of the property, the other people? Do you?
Yeah, I think the other thing too, if there's only two people interested, then are we still going to move forward with this process? Because, you know, are you going to go through any other parts if you're only going to get rid of a couple acres? So, but we can, we can send out information to landlords. If 25% of them say yes, that's a pretty good return.
Sounds like you're working with realtors, right? So you.
I am working with realtors and bankers.
Realtors.
Yep. My, yep, all kinds of.
But this is just on the slivers, because Chris, what he was looking at was like a couple acres.
It's larger parcels.
Yeah, so the slivers are, fall into a category where we have to look at them in terms of square footage. But Chris actually made, this isn't on the agenda, so I don't know if you want to talk about it. But he made an offer, which was per Kevin's request, so then the village can decide if it wants to accept that offer.
That's another matter. Okay.
Yeah.
But you're talking slivers, and that's what we have the.
I'm talking slivers. That's an offer.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
How many slivers are we talking about here?
They're in the packet. There's, and there's also like a, there's a, there's a binder of slivers.
I did include in the packet the pictures.
Yeah.
I did see them.
The pictures of little, you know, there's an old well, where the old wellhouse was.
Yeah.
Here's a little sliver in the middle of a parcel, you know.
Yeah.
You know, so they are included in the packet.
Yeah, I did see it.
Like we said, Chris is our larger.
Can we get rid of that sliver that the old water tower sits on too?
That, that actually came up as not a sliver, because it has potential value. So it was the real estate agents who separated, who had, were initially separating value to no value. And so we're doing value as relative, the relatively less valuable landlocked bits and pieces. There are some pieces that do have potential buyers or commercial usage that we aren't putting into the sliver project. But the water tower is one that fell out of the sliver pocket.
All right. So we've got a motion and we've got a second to proceed with this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
And as a related, do we take Chris's offer that we just received to economic development for consideration and bring it back to the board or to the board?
Yeah.
Then, if Chris is.
And we can take it back to economic development, we can invite the realtor, Ben, or someone back. I don't know if you want to do it that way, or I'm fine with whatever.
I got a feeling you're going to get more with the sale of the two that Chris is interested in. He will for everything else, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, it's really just to kind of clear up the books and take what is untaxable and make it taxable.
Hey, I was behind this idea, you know. Thank you for running with it, but I, you know, a year ago. Chris, you had your hand up.
Yeah, question to Lisa and staff. A few meetings ago, a constituent or a business owner came in and was interested in a piece of land. And it was stated that you send out the tax, taxes to him and he keeps getting returned to you. And then Eric chimed in and said, well, if you pay that amount of tax that's owed on that piece of land, then that land belongs to you then. Can we get a list of that, of those pieces of land or that?
We can get a list of.
Well, that's the case?
Yeah.
Because that might add to our, our sliver conversation.
Okay.
All right. Can you take care of that, Lisa? We don't need a motion on that, do we?
Yeah. Chris, he'll get it.
You want that back to economic development, or do you want that back here? The, the list of land? No. The list of land untaxed, unpaid tax.
Delinquent taxes.
Delinquent taxes.
On vacant land.
On vacant land.
Um, boy, I don't know. I think it goes to economic development. You guys have started this, haven't you? I mean, how you feel?
We can look at it as part of the processes and then bring it back to the board.
See what the taxes are, because the village would have to pay the taxes to, and again, cost analysis is that we're paying the taxes to.
All right.
Well, we could add it as part of that conversation, because we pay it and I don't, yeah. Thanks.
All right.
We can look at it.
Okay.
We'll add it for you.
All right.
Do we want Chris's offer to go to economic development to then be referred to the board? Or bring it to the board at the next?
Well, probably economic development. I think you got to hear from your realtors on that one.
It's a realtor that, the realtors that were in here are the one that made the.
That drafted it for them.
Yeah, okay.
Per Kevin's suggestion.
It's just, I want to make sure we don't have any conflicts on that. I mean, I, you know, the realtors, because that one is what he's talking about. How many, was there like acreage? Two acres on yours?
There was.
Two acres. So, you know, I feel like we should have at least an appraisal on that or whatever.
So the issue with the appraisal is there's no comparable. What you can do is you could have a real estate agent or a banker sign off that that's fair value price. So we could, that could be the next step. I don't know if that needs to be, the economic development committee is doing that, but I mean, that's the next step. He's made the offer.
Yeah.
So if you're looking for third-party, a check box to make sure that everything's correct, then you would want to send his offer to not his realtor, but your, who wants to access your realtor or the village's realtor, to say that that is a fair offer based on.
Right. I think we need to.
Because they'll know the square, the square footage pricing on, on the village property. They'll, they'll be able to make that assessment, because Kevin was able to do that at the meeting.
I just, that would be my recommendation, that we get it. I just, that would be my recommendation, that we get a- Opinion. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so he wants that at the Economic Development. Can we, agenda that we want to sign off from a third party?
Yeah, we, we need that, yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I think we've taken care of that. Let's move on. Discussion, possible action, extraterritorial CSM for the Rindall Trust. Lisa?
This is a extraterritorial CSM. It was originally done in 2020, combining a lot of parcels for the Rindalls. It was, found out that one was omitted from that. This is just upping, upgrading that CSM. It had been approved by the preliminary from the town, the county surveyor, the zoning office.
Recommendation for plating commission was no objection to it.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, where'd it go here?
Second.
Oh, let me finish that motion.
Oh, I thought you were done.
You find it?
Slivers, oh, there's, discussion, extraterritorial CSM for the Rindall Trust, Town of Oakland.
Okay. Eric's going to make it, and then Ted's going to second it.
Ted wants to second it.
I already did it.
All right, they're, they're a little faster over here. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed. Let's move on. Bird City USA, this is a combination of Public Works.
Yeah, so public, I'll go back to Public Works. Chris made the recommendation that we apply to become a Bird City USA. I believe we are currently also a Tree City USA, which also helps bolster our Bird City USA, which is going to look amazing on the Welcome to Cambridge sign. All the birds and trees. There is a list and a status level for how Bird City, you can be with Bird City. And at that meeting, Chris had asked for, or you had asked Mark, for a local ornithologist whose number and name I have for you, who agreed to work with the village on the application and also reached out to another birdwatching group or intends to, who can help assist with some of the status points, I guess, there was a point system, to bolster our Bird City application. There is a fee involved in trying to be a Bird City. And so that is why it's here at the Village Board. Also, just to let you know that you have the option of becoming a Bird City or rejecting it, should you feel that way.
One, one thing, I was reading the application. We also have to have an event around Bird City. It's a requirement. So it looks like it's like point system, but that's like a hard requirement.
I thought it was like a special one day.
Yeah, but you have to have a special one day to like celebrate the Bird City.
But that was a requirement? I thought that was-
It's, it looks like a point system, but if you like reread it, it says point six must be done, which is the event, essentially.
It's similar what we do, yeah, for Tree City when we do the Arbor Day planting earth.
Sure. It's on like migratory.
Well, I wasn't emotionally prepared to agree to that, but I guess I will deal with it.
All right, how much is the fee?
I think it's $125.
All right.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a feral cat issue as well.
There is a cat city issue.
Let's just hold off on the, the fee lines. Yeah, okay.
Well, I didn't want to bring it up, but-
All right. How do they evaluate this? I mean, we, we have trees. We have 176 species of trees. What do we, what do we try to bring in birds then?
No, if you, I mean, yeah, we do actually through a series of initiatives that the village has in its ordinance to make it friendlier to bird populations. And it's sort of tiered. I guess the party isn't part of that tier, it's a requirement. But who doesn't want to have a bird party?
And just, but one question.
Yeah.
It hasn't come up, I don't think yet. We don't have a problem with geese and their droppings. And is that going to run afoul? No pun intended, of, of what you're trying to do with Bird City. Seriously, I mean, I, I don't know.
I don't know the habitat aggression between Bird City and Goose City.
By flying isn't going to bring more geese into town.
I don't think so, no.
All right, I'm just, I'm just asking, all right.
We're talking wild birds, right?
Do we have the solar panels?
Yeah.
Wow, all right.
So the habitats for songbirds and the birds that are meant to be attracted by being a Bird City shouldn't necessarily affect the goose population.
Okay. All right, so we've got this recommendation. Anybody want to second this or, or make it? Make a recommendation, make the motion.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the application for Bird City USA and the application fee.
I'll second.
Okay. This is money, but do we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Shaffer Weiss.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes, okay. Let's move on to the loader rollout.
Yeah, loader rollout. So again, in your packet, under Public Works, is-
Carla's been busy this week.
I know.
I have been busy. I'm really, really tired. I'll say it's finals week for those of you out of college. So I'm struggling. Where was I? Loader, okay. So there is a request to update the loader and put it on to one of our maintenance plans that allows for updated turnover of the machinery after two years. So it's, I believe, it's in the packet, but it's $6,000. So it's about $3,000 a year to go through the exchange program that we have within other, with other pieces of equipment currently in the purview of the Public Works.
It looks like it costs us $3,000 a year for the loader because you're, you pay $6,000 every other year.
Well, in terms of depreciation, it's, it's an excellent deal. I mean, you're not-
I think so too.
Yeah, so-
It's the same thing with our bop cats. You know, we don't put that many hours on them and-
Yeah, and so that, I forgot the hour numbers. I think it was 600 hours that you get. I don't, how do I remember this?
I don't know.
It's insane. So anyway, 600 hours that you can put on that piece of equipment. I think Chris said he was running it at about 400 hours that he had estimated. So that didn't seem to be an issue. There is a kickback of $25 an hour. Is it $25 an hour or 45?
45.
Phew, $25 an hour should we roll over that amount. But it's, it's a really solid plan in Public Works before.
I think it's a good deal.
It's a good deal.
And then how much were we going to get for the loader we have now?
It worked out to be about half price. So I mean, whatever the, the full price was, we're going to turn in the one we have. And I think if, if we were turning one in, it was like, I think the turn-in was $50,000 and we were paying $60,000 for the new one.
53.
53.
Oh, thank you.
61.
53 for the turn-in, 61 for the new.
That's pretty close.
And then the-
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion on this piece of equipment?
I'll make a motion for the loader rollout.
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Lisa, roll call.
It would be then direction for us to go out for a loan to purchase or for the initial purchase.
All right, so we still have to approve?
Yeah, yes.
Roll call, please.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Shaffer Weiss.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Yeller.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes, all right. Get a little rollout. Roller, loader. Okay, moving on. Correspondence, in your packet, you should have a letter here from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Lisa, this was addressed to you.
This is just as an update. The DOT did respond to the developers for the 134 intersection and listed a number of items they'd want to see happen. The developer is working on those. When it's complete, they will bring it back to us and what they submit. So this is for information at this, this time.
Okay, questions? All right, we've got the Village Forest Tax Insert. And this was approved by the Public Works Committee. I don't know, do you want to talk about this, Carla?
I do want to talk about it.
Yes.
Now, over at the Public Works Committee, Jay Weiss, our village forester, came in and made an amazing presentation about how special Cambridge's Tree Project was and how unique it was in the country and how many trees we have and how they are recorded it, how it recorded, audited, monitored. A lot of time and effort goes into this village asset and the village's property. Where things start to go a little sideways is communication between the homeowner in, behind the terrace of that space and the trees. And as to what, how those trees can be maintained because they are village property and some of the issues that residents are unaware of, that lawn maintenance, string trimmers, mowers, these things damage the trees. You cannot pick up a tree and move it into your yard, into other places. That pruning should be done by the forester to eliminate damage to the trees. And there were a number, there are actually six. Six was the number of issues that he came to bring to the village. And we had kind of separated them into three areas. One was responsibility of the homeowner. One was responsibility, and I'm forgetting what they are now because it's getting late. But we'll focus on responsibility of the homeowner, which is where this packet lands. So it was recommended a couple of ways that the village forester could communicate to the village some of the issues that people just don't really know that those things damage the trees or they don't, aren't really as aware as they could be. And so this was one step in that awareness and one of the easiest, quickest ways to reach out to residents is through their tax bill. So he rushed as quickly as he could and also very effectively despite that rush to get this insert together, which I believe Lisa provided feedback on to him as well. And now it's in front of the board for approval for the packet.
And it is, it's third sheets, front and back, so as not to add postage and so forth. So the larger one is in your packet for you to see, but it is in thirds to fit in the tax bill.
Yeah, so the narrative here is that homeowners should take on the responsibility of championing, championing the trees in front of their space and becoming their hero and their protector. And there's additional information about some of the issues that he's seen in the village. But this was one of the ways that he wanted to send forth the communication to the residents.
Okay. I think it's a great job. I'm not much of a proofer, but on the, this page, this, on the right-hand side, the first paragraph, the second line, more than any.
I fixed that.
You fixed it? Okay. Good. Good job, because you don't want me proofing. All right, are we okay with putting this in the property tax bills? I think so.
Yeah.
How much do we put in the property tax bill?
It's already, it's, it's under correspondence because we knew we'd be stopping bills already. So we took the, the lead from Public Works and they're getting stopped as we speak.
Okay, true. All right, so we don't really need to act on it.
Yeah, so take that.
Take that back. All right, good.
But thank you, Carla.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And, you know, we, again, we have 175 different tree species. I'm going to be thanking people, but boy, Jay is doing a great job with this. He really is, and we've got something to be proud of. Okay, upcoming meetings, December 8th, Library Board.
Oh, sorry, that's passed. Oh, so it's, I'm sorry, all of this is, I didn't.
Yeah, okay.
Skip to 21st Water and Sewer.
Yeah, 21st Water and Sewer Committee.
And Carla pointed out, we did schedule Public Works and Economic Development both on the same night. So we'll have to-
And on the same night, and we don't have access to this room.
To this room because we do it without the calendar in front of us. So we will be looking to reschedule those two in January as well as our normal meetings in January. I just didn't go that far out.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items. You've got the referendum question, update from Dane County on stormwater and Carol Sepianza on tourism. Carla, didn't you have something that you wanted to put on here?
Did, we had brought up, I guess, we had circled around it, I guess, the amendment in our contract with the winery that refers to Lagoon Road. We had had conversations about removing or having a conversation with the winery about removing that winery's attachment to Lagoon Road and moving forward with Lagoon Road without their portion of that space. So that was something I'd like to move forward with.
All right, I got that.
I have free convenient open session on there still too. We can go into closed session today.
So Lisa addressed my January meeting question.
Why, you were-
Yeah, I had one. I think, I think it was Chris that said it, but it reminded me of this. Couple of meetings ago, we had a resident come in and talk about the Melster site and some of the land and helping out, whatever happened. I missed, I, I looked through the notes, I didn't see in the last Village Board meeting. So I don't know if it went to other like planning commissioners or whatever happened.
And I will be sharing, I've spoken to Carla a little bit. We are talking to attorneys. There were some questions raised on that.
Okay.
I'll be sharing the agreement with that home again with the board and Economic Development Committee. But there were some questions raised, so it was put on hold for right now. I did reach out-
And that's just for renting the land, like to-
For renting the land. So I did reach out to Wenzel and let him know questions were raised and it was on hold.
Okay, so will we see, I'm assuming we'll see it in January then to talk about it?
Yes, we talk about the sales of the land and so forth. It will come back up, yes.
Cool.
Yeah, I did send an email because I don't believe that I've seen that contract with Home Again. I think that predates my tenure here. So I think I did send an email to Lisa to ask the Economic Development because it's part of that audit. She looked at that and then also requested that the board get a copy as well.
All right, anything else for upcoming meetings?
I, I don't know if this is, per your own instruction, this is where I was told I could request upcoming meetings. I've had some back and forth with Jay. I've sent you all a message on upcoming agenda I'd like to receive regarding our developmental agreement with you guys. This would be our original developmental agreement. I believe I've provided the extra information that was asked of me. And I am prepared to have preliminary conversations with Jay or with Matt. But I would like to, at this point in time, request to get an agenda item to discuss our development agreement with you all.
Okay, all right.
You know, it might make sense for us to have those preliminary conversations first so that we would be prepared to answer questions or make a recommendation to you when we put that on the agenda.
All right, you all right with that then?
I mean, yeah, I don't, I, I, I would request that we get something down and we actually meet and we get moving because I have requested this agenda a few times now. And, you know, frankly, in the past, I've requested things that I've been told would be discussed or that other people had mentioned would be valuable to discuss, but it hasn't been. So if, if we don't put something on the board, I'm just going to keep requesting weekly to all of your emails and yours and hers. And I'm going to keep coming to every single meeting and asking until we put it on the board, so.
Okay.
He just wants to keep it moving.
Yeah, it's totally fair to keep it moving. I just want, didn't want us to be in a situation where we were negotiating a contract in, in the, in the board meeting.
Contract in an open forum, but I do, I have worries about getting in a room with somebody who's not on the board and attorneys that aren't on the board somebody who's not on the board, and attorneys that aren't on the board, to talk about what may or may not be amenable to the board, when really the, the issues at hand are between the elected officials of the village and the incentivized person to, to bring their business here. That's, that's really what my concerns are.
Okay, all right.
And so, I, I like to keep things above board and open, because, you know, frankly, I've had conversations independently with Mark and Lisa, where they told me to do things that, you know, I should, apparently I didn't have the right to do, and I shouldn't do, like bill you guys back for all the water that was unusable in my distillery, and then I showed up at a meeting where I expected to get that taken care of and addressed, and instead, me and Joe got them knocked down in a little fight in front of the entire water board. I think Ted remembers pretty well. And so that is kind of why I'm, I really am pushing to do this in the open.
All right, okay, thank you. Let's see, we have those two, and then we've got the other items that are on here. Anything else for future agenda?
Can I just ask a question? Who's, who's going to get back to Nick about scheduling that meeting? Because he asked very specifically, and I don't know who's taking accountability for that.
Well, there's a procedure in the ordinance where the president has, has some discretion about when things go on the agenda. He doesn't have to make a decision right now about a specific date. We could do that, but, but it's not required.
And, and I would like to talk with you about this, and then we can get back, so we can do that before the 15th of January.
Great, I think that's reasonable now you have a date to hold it.
Thank you, that's wonderful.
Okay.
Now, who's that person?
All right. Okay, anything else? Reconvene into open session, and...
I, I didn't take off from the old agenda, we didn't go into closed session today.
All right.
That's really closed session the whole time? Oh man, we're in trouble.
That's what I get for carrying one agenda over.